All right, so I'm going to call the meeting to order of the Select Board at 6:31 PM on February 12th, 2018. First thing we start with opening remarks, announcements, and agenda review. Is there anything on the agenda that anyone needs to comment on or change or add to it, delete from it, et cetera? If not, then I think we'll start with public comment. Is anyone here for public comment not related to a agenda item? If so, please come forward. We'll, just while you're coming up, we'll do what we usually do, which is we'll listen to you carefully. We'll generally not react or offer any comment or commentary at that time, but we'll take what you have to say under advisement. So, please just identify yourself at the microphone and-
My name is Bill Elsasser. I live in the Anne Whalen. I am now a bit frightened walking further than Xana toward the university on the main drag, archipelago statements notwithstanding. And I would like to propose a Bridge of Flowers analog down in that area, which might mitigate the awfulness of it. Arguably, there is some awfulness there. And I don't know if I could afford to provide a solenoid for such a community movement, perhaps elderly retired people working together to implement some lush aesthetic as opposed to the grayness of the building. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else here for public comment related to some, if you're wanting to speak to something that's on the agenda, we'll get to you when we get to that agenda item. So if you're here for just a general public comment, now would be the time, but if not, we'll wait till we get to that point in the agenda and assume that's the case. Okay. So we'll move right into our action and discussion items. First up is the second quarter budget update, and we have Ms. Aldrich here, and we have a memo in our packet related to that, so I'd like to come forward.
This is going to be really quick tonight. I've had a few comments lately about, "Oh, you're not going to read that whole letter." And I'm not going to read the whole letter. This letter will be, this report will be posted on the, is posted on the accounting website, so anybody that wants to go and read where we're at at the second quarter, it's there. If anybody has any problems getting to it, they can call the accounting office. So, on the second quarter, there's really nothing different from any of the other second quarters we've done over the last 10 years, so I'm not going to bother reading through the whole thing. I'm just going to point out a few of the highlights that stuck out for me. I wanted to mention that Cherry Hill is up 15% from last year at this time. However, it does continue to be less than they were historically on the revenue side talking here. The fines and forfeits are higher than usual, and that's due to a large zoning violation penalty that was, penalty and interest that was paid recently. Penalties and interest is-
Jump in, that's the presidential payment.
I didn't know if I should say that live or not. Penalties and interest are up a bit. They're at 55% this year from FY16. I mean, from FY17, and they were up 55% from FY16, and we're just watching this to see what the new trend is here. On the expenditure side, the salary, we have a salary reserve in there for some of the contractual agreements that aren't settled yet. So that tends to skew the percentages in departmental budgets, because this is all budgeted in the employee benefits section of the budget until those are settled, and then we move the funds at the annual town meeting. The only other things that stick out are, we'll probably be going to the Finance Committee for a reserve transfer for the fire department boiler, the North Amherst Fire Department boiler that went down. That was approximately $62,000. I don't have a total cost yet for that. And then there's snow and ice. We don't know where we're going to end up with snow and ice this year. It seems to be another year like last year where we have a lot of nuisance storms. They still have to go out in sand and stuff. And the other big section that is concerning is employee benefits. This is where we pay our, all of our employee benefits, including retirement. This is also where the appropriations are for health insurance. We had budgeted for the first increase at 10% to the PPLs, but we did not budget for the second and third increases, and it's our hope that we can raise, that we can pay this deficit with savings in the operating budget. We're aggressively working with department heads to stop any discretionary spending and trying to control it so that we can. And that's it. I told you I was quick. Any questions?
Ms. Brewer?
Yeah, I guess just one, and that was on the hotel motel tax, which is running at 61.9% on a year-to-date basis, and I was wondering if those come in evenly per month and/or if there's some other explanation, or are we actually running ahead this year?
They come in on the monthly, they're not, they're not a same amount every month. It's whatever the usage is for that. This is through November for hotel motel.
So if it's through November, that's five months, so we actually are exceeding estimate on that one.
Right. You're talking hotel mo- just trying-
Hotel motel.
Okay. I got the UMass payment in lieu of, in my head, yes. It's only through November.
And does the UMass show in that line, or does it show in?
The revenues for the UMass hotel, it's a payment in lieu. It's not a pilot, but it's just a payment. That's under nonrecurring revenue, so it's in a different line item completely.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Brewer?
Thank you. It would be helpful in future if, under miscellaneous nonrecurring, it's fine if it's just in the text, if you could break out which part of that's the UMass part and which part of it's the Amherst College part, that would be great in terms of the nonrecurring, just because it shows a total, but I don't know what that represents.
Okay. That can be done.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments regarding the budget?
Thank you.
I did actually have one other quick one. You mentioned the boiler, and we've certainly talked about the boiler before, but where will that fit under, where will that, what category will that end up in when you end up writing this report in the future?
It's in public safety. It's under, it's in the fire department budget under new equipment and building maintenance, so that's where it'll be.
Great, thank you.
Just to follow on that, will there be, or have you considered using any ambulance funds, ambulance funds reserve for whatever, I forget the name of the fund, but any ambulance reserve funds for mitigating or reducing that cost of it being out of the general fund that's, or-
I'm not sure that's possible, because it really doesn't have to do with the medical side. I know it's heating the building that holds the ambulances and stuff, but I'm not sure to check into that a little more, yeah.
A lot of little expense. I just was thinking maybe some portion, because, you know, obviously it's a fire operation and, but that's an integral part, I didn't know whether or not the-
Yeah, we normally use the ambulance funds just for ambulance or medical equipment for the ambulances or, and payroll.
Right.
We don't know.
So I do note in that line at a meeting I was at recently that the fire chief, Chief Nelson, did make the comment that there is a heating requirement in order to maintain medical supplies at the adequate temperature that is required.
Check into it.
Right. Fantastic. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. So, I'm going to alter the agenda a little bit. It was pointed out to me that we have a, we have a Chapter 61A notice of intent to withdraw a parcel from a, from a section of Chapter 61A land, and it's a relatively small item, and we have someone here that is here for that purpose, so I think we'll skip ahead, barring any comment from my colleagues, to Item 4E, which is Chapter 61A notice of intent to withdraw. And I think in our circumstances, generally, we have a right of first refusal. Mr. Zomek, if you could kind of walk us through this particular piece. He was thinking he was going to get this much later, so it's not quite-
Thank you very much. Dave Zomek, Assistant Town Manager. I'm actually joined, the owner of the property in question is here behind me tonight, Ms. Edelman is here, so if there are any specific questions that the board may have, I'm sure she could answer perhaps more specific questions than I can. This is a somewhat unusual situation for us, and I realize that we're asking the board to move a little more quickly than is your practice. In short, before you on the screen, and for those folks at home, there is a, the property in question is here, and the sliver of land that we're talking about, which is in Chapter 61A, is three tenths of an acre. It is right here. It is a tiny sliver of land that Ms. Edelman needs because her well for her house was actually determined to be on that property. So she needs to add that small sliver of land from property owned by Coles to her property so that she can eventually sell her property. And although the planning board and the Conservation Commission typically weigh in on these, I realize before they reach you, I think, given that there is a impending closing on the property, we were doing everything we could to try to move this process along fairly quickly. I have been in direct contact with Christine Brestrop. She is very confident that the planning board would not recommend to you that the town exercise our right of first refusal on .03 acres of land, nor would, I can say with some certainty, that we would not be interested in this parcel for conservation purposes. So, I did check in with Town Council, Sharon Everett, and there is nothing legally that prohibits you from doing one of two things, either voting to not exercise your right of first refusal this evening, or voting, one option, another option would be to vote to not exercise your right of first refusal pending a vote from the planning board and the Conservation Commission. I think, given the circumstances, I feel very confident that the planning board nor the Conservation Commission would recommend to you to exercise the town's right of first refusal on this tiny sliver of land. So, I'm happy to give way to the owner of the property if you have more specific questions, and I hope I covered that well.
Does the Select Board have any questions relative to this?
Yeah, Mr. Zomek, wouldn't the third option be to, not that I'm suggesting it, but just to make sure we get all the options on the table, to approve it subject to the approval of the planning board and Conservation Commission as opposed to negative?
I might have said that wrong. I think that was what I was trying to say. My only concern there is that, and perhaps the owner could speak more to this than I can, but I know they have a closing date coming up. The Conservation Commission will take this up Wednesday night, the 14th, but the planning board, due to some scheduling challenges last week with the snowstorm and whatnot, it may be a few weeks before they can get this on the agenda again. So, I don't know if-
No, microphone.
And just identify yourself at the mic so the folks at home know who you are.
Oh, I'm Deborah Edelman.
Thank you.
And I'm, I don't feel this famous, except when the Patriots are playing, so I was excited to see my name up there. My closing is February 20th, and it was already extended. It was supposed to be January 31st. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Brewer?
So recognizing both that deadline and the fact that we need enough time to make these decisions, that's why these come to us with a certain timeframe on them, and we're trying to make it shorter already, and so I'm a little frustrated that we're being told that it's not fast enough when we're actually trying to do it faster than normal, and this is not the first property owner who has, who has worked with us and been frustrated by the timeliness of the process, but I can also appreciate that in this particular circumstance, the planning board had that weather issue and would have done it last week. It's still cutting it close for the 20th, because our clo, your closing date is not our problem. But in terms of us, you know, doing our due diligence, et cetera, from what Mr. Zomek has reported, I'm not in the mood to fight about it.
There's not further comment? I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I move to not exercise the town's first, right of first refusal, right of refusal option in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 61A, Section 14, to purchase three tenths of an acre owned by W.D. Coles said land off of Chutesbury Road abutting the land, town. Is, I'm going to stop for a second. Is it Chutesbury or Pelham?
It's in Amherst.
I know, but what town line is it abutting?
Abutting the town.
No. The motions are Pelham, but Pelham doesn't run up that way. Chutesbury runs up that way.
This is your problem with knowing geography.
I think you could delete abutting the town.
Yeah, I think I'm just going to maybe remove those words.
That's a good idea.
I'm going to pause for a moment, and I'm going to ask, if I may, Mr. Chair, just ask Mr. Zomek about this.
Yes.
Doesn't seem like we need those words.
Words can just be deleted.
That's what we were wondering too, because I'm not-
Because we have a map and parcel number.
I think it's Chutesbury, but I'd rather than correct the, if it's, it's really not necessary. So, I'm going to start the motion over again, and I move to not exercise the town's first right of refusal option in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 61A, Section 14, to purchase approximately three tenths acres owned by W.D. Coles said land off of Chutesbury Road, assessors map, parcel 1D, 9B-11.
Just going to motion in a second. Is there further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous.
No, I'm abstaining.
Oh, you're abstaining? Okay. One abstention. Thank you. Got to have myself there.
Listen, but you don't, you know, you don't count the hands.
So, that would be, we're 0-1. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Yes, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Put Mr. Zomek on wheelchair. You should have a wheelchair tonight, because I'm going to go back to our original order, which is the, next on our agenda is the group health insurance update. So, Mr. Brock, would you want to bring that forward for a moment?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. With us tonight, Ms. Aldrich, who's our comptroller, and Patrick Brock, who chairs the town's Employee Health Insurance Advisory Committee, and I just wanted to give you some updates on where we are. So as you know, the town is, ensures its employees, along with the town of Pelham and the Amherst Regional School District, through the Amherst-Pelham Health Claims Trust. It's a legal entity formed in 1986 by the, by Amherst-Pelham and the district to pay claims and administer the health insurance programs for its employees and retirees. So, this is, we are not an insurance company, we are a trust where the money from the town that contributes to employees' health insurance and from the employees that we deduct from the paychecks goes into the trust, and then all the claims that the, that the employees and retirees incur are paid out of the trust. So, that's why you have heard me talk before about the volatility of the trust. When the experience of the trust is good, meaning fewer claims than the money coming in, we benefit from that, but when the claims exceed our revenue, we, that's a bad thing, and that's what's been happening over the last period of time. We have, over the last year alone, we've increased, on July 1, we increased the HMO rate by 10%. On October 1, we increased both plans by 10, the HMO and the PPO by 10%, and then on February 1, we increased the plans by 100 for individual 200, which is about a 14% or 16% increase. The, we, so, but we have a problem with it now, and so we've engaged our employee group, which is represented through the Insurance Advisory Committee, to talk about solutions to the problem. The, what's the problem? The problem is that we have a very large number of large claims, and this has been going on for a while now, and while we have reinsurance, which means we buy insurance to cover the large claims, that doesn't kick in until the claim hits $250,000, so the trust has to pay the first $250,000 of the claim. We've had a number of those over the years, and I've summarized those in the, in the memo that you have in front of you, the frequently asked questions. Additionally, we have had, we've benefited over the years by having the trust have lower than you would expect premiums, and when there are no increases to premiums, that's benefits the employees, but it also benefits the two towns and the district, because we're not appropriating funds for the trust. So, while in the past years we have benefited, it, the experience has deteriorated where we have had to make these insurance, and these increases on, into the trust. So the, when you make an increase to the trust, when you do an increase to the trust, it comes out of the town's coffers and the school's coffers, as well as the employee's pocket. So it's, both parties get hit by this. To put it in perspective, we are, we are self-insured trust. Our neighboring communities, like the city of North Hampton and the University of Massachusetts, not a city, but major employer, are part of the Group Insurance Commission. The Group Insurance Commission is the state-run health plan that, that the, that the city or the town could participate in if we so chose. So, when this problem began to rear its head, we engaged the employee group through the Insurance Advisory Committee, which Mr. Brock chairs, and he does a tremendous job of chairing it. It's a large committee, 14 members. Every bargaining unit in the, in the town and in the schools is represented at the table and has, and can participate in the discussion. And we've identified three things that we have to address. First is, do we want to stay self-insured as a trust or not? Or do we want to go out and buy insurance? And the key question on that is, who, who is going to bear the risk? The risk is, if you are fully insured, as you would imagine, you pay a premium every month, or you pay the premium for the year, and the insurance company, if the experience is bad, they absorb it. If the experience is good, they get the benefit of it. But in either case, they absorb the risk. The, the second one was, we offer two carriers now. One is Harvard Pilgrim Health, and the other is Blue Cross Blue Shield. And having two, our employees split almost evenly between those two plans, those two carriers, makes it difficult for us to assemble ourselves and market ourselves out if we want to seek something, a different type of coverage. So one of the things that we would like to do is to eliminate one of the two plans. When you look at the plans side by side, there's 99 to 100% overlap. So if you are in Harvard Health, there's a 100% chance, based on your, that your primary care physician is going to be covered by Blue Cross. If you're on Blue Cross and you, and we want to switch to Harvard Health, there's a 99% chance, and if it's not, if the, if the physician is not covered, Blue Cross will go out to that person and offer them a contract to say, "Would you like to be able to take this, the Blue Cross plan?" So the first one was whether we want to stay self-insured or go fully insured. The second one is to have just one carrier that offers, and we still offer two plans, HMO and PPO. HMO means that you're in the network. PPO is a little more expensive, but it allows you to use the network of the HMO or go outside the network to the PPO with certain conditions. The, and then the third item that we want, that we've talked a lot about is plan design. And right now, the town offers first dollar coverage, which is unusual, to say the least, in, in health insurance industry now. We look at, again, the GIC communities. We also look at the Hampshire County Trust, which ensures about 70 small towns in the, in Western Massachusetts. They have a plan through Blue Cross that mimics, in a large measure, the GIC plan. And then we look at private employers too, in terms of what they are offering their employees, because that's our competitive environment. What we're trying to do is get to what I call intelligent plan design, something where our employees can migrate to, that as we look at their experience and we've determined whether they are utilizing all the benefits that we're paying for. Sometimes they're not utilizing all the benefits that we're paying for, and it might not be as hard a request. The goals, as we talk about this with the Insurance Advisory Committee, is with the three increases we had this year, we don't want to live through that again next year. We just don't want to be there. And so we want stability. We want to, we want to be in a place that gives us options, so consolidating the risk pool into one group gives us options. The stability we'd like to see is, you can't look very far ahead in the insurance market, especially health insurance, but we'd like stability and predictability for at least two years. So it'd be FY19 and FY20. And then in terms of our plan design, we'd like to bring, start to beginning to bring our benefits in line with other communities and with the university and everybody else that's out there in terms of what we're offering. It's a complex conversation to have at the Insurance Advisory level. Mr. Brock, does it, it's, it's a, it's a large number of people there, and then there's even, you know, probably three times that many people who are very concerned, employees mostly, who are in the audience observing. And we've had very structured conversations about this. There's a small group that, that, that we gathered together to sort of dig deeper into some of these issues, and then on last Friday afternoon, we brought these, their, their research back to the full group. The timing of this is if we are to change on July 1, which it means that we start making deductions from employee paychecks on June 1, which means that we need to have the actual Blue Cross cards in people's hands by that time. Blue Cross typically needs two months, you know, two, six to eight weeks to implement, to get all the cards, because that's the most important thing to our employees. They don't, it's not fair to the employees to have, make a change in them, and something happens on July 4th and they're not, they go to the hospital and their card doesn't work. It has to work, it has to be tested. So we're on a very tight timeframe, and we've been at this for a few months now, but our goal is to make a decision by end of February, early March, so that we can have a direction on where we need to go. And then, and during this process, we have a major commitment to doing a lot of employee education on what the changes mean to them and giving them, and most people, when you have a group meeting, their questions aren't important, they don't want to ask their question in public, so there's a lot of one-on-one, and we would have people from Blue Cross in here, or representatives from the, whoever we buy the insurance from, here to walk people through, who's, who's your provider? What does it look like? How's it look for you in terms of how this new design would look like? So, that's where we are. It's a major financial challenge for the town. Our experience over the last year has not been great, in the sense that we can, our claims continue to come in at a very high rate, and one of the other challenges that happens when you switch to a fully insured program is like right now, we will, the claims that we incur in May and June, they won't come in as bills until- until July and August. So we are responsible for those bills. It's the tail runout, whatever you want to call it. Some people call it IBNR, incurred but not reported. We have to factor that into the price as well. And we would want, and that's, so in essence, we will be paying 14 months of claims over a 12-month period. And so we have to raise those funds. We can work on that to extend that over a two-year payback period, but we still have to come up with the money. So once we have the group consolidated, if we get to fully insured and we see where we are with that after two years, we can look at this again. And if we say, we'd like to go back to being self-insured, we have that option. If we feel like whatever insurance we go to isn't adequate, we can look at that. There are a number of options. But the key piece right now is that we have to take action. I think the Insurance Advisory Committee, the employees who are participating in that are really well-educated on this challenge that we face and have been pretty open to having a frank discussion. It's not an easy one because they feel it's a degradation of benefits, which it is, but it's one that they've come to understand and educate themselves about. Those are the people in the room. There's a lot of people out there who are just working their regular jobs, who this will hit them, and we have to talk to them about it as well. So I just wanted to have this opportunity to talk to you. There's no action from the board. And Ms. Aldrich, Mr. Brock are here. If you have questions for them or comments from them, I'm not sure if either one of you want to say anything. But I want to bring it to your attention because it's a big issue. It's something you will hear a lot about as we focus on town meeting and appropriations for this year and for next year. And the Finance Director, just as a side note, the schools are the largest employee group. The Finance Director from the schools is intimately involved in all of our conversations. Anything else you'd like to add, either?
Mr. Brock or Ms. Aldrich, do you either one want to offer any?
Do you have any questions for me?
No, just do you have anything you wanted to offer as far as information for us, as far as process and what you've discovered, discussed, et cetera?
Patrick Brock, an Amherst Town Employee Retiree and retiree representative on the Insurance Advisory Committee and the Chair. That was a mistake.
[laughing]
I'm really pleased with what we've done in the last year as far as organization. Our Insurance Advisory Committee over the last 10 years, out of the 14 members, we'd get six or eight at each meeting. When this started blowing up in June and July, our attendance increased, and we've had full attendance at every single meeting. And we've been meeting a lot. When it was first proposed that we needed an additional increase sometime in December or January, after doing two increases, there was a lot of pushback. And there was a lot of education, a lot of outside meetings, outside communications and stuff. I was overwhelmed and pleased that we voted unanimously to authorize the increase February 1st. What we're looking at now, and hopefully that will take us to the end of the year, but we've had some recent negative information that that's going to be difficult. I think the town manager has put together a plan. I constantly remind the town manager and the committee that it's the insurance administrator's duties to set forth the program, and it's the Insurance Advisory Committee to either support it or oppose it. He has asked for the committee's input. He's a good listener. We've adjusted a few things, and we've moved forward. I'm not sure that there are several difficult subjects coming up that can derail our efforts. And I'm not sure what the outcome is. We'll keep working on that. And what I'm most pleased with is the communications between the town management staff and the committee members. It is a significant financial event. Working with the Retirement Board, I know what those are like. And I understand where the town is coming from. Although there's massive increases for the employees, to come up with the balance of that money from the town and the 75% contribution is three times what we're suffering. So we are meeting the 20th?
Tuesday.
Yeah. And we will try our best to go as fast as we can. We're kind of pushing it along. But what we're looking at is, as the town manager outlined to you, is a plan starting July 1. Hopefully, that plan would avoid any further premium increases for a year or so if we do the actions that he's recommended. And we've discussed all those actions. And in fact, the education for the last meeting was about deductibles and co-pays and how they apply. And I think that there was a lot of recognition that they weren't what they presumed to be. And we had representatives from Blue Cross Blue Shield helping us. We were getting the facts straight from the insurer. So it was very, very helpful. And we just have to keep lobbying. Town manager can go into other issues that will arise. But I'm hopeful that we'll have a vote, and the issues that we have would be resolved. But there are other issues, collective bargaining issues and other issues that are going to have to be addressed.
Thank you. Questions for the manager, Mr. Brock? Mr. Seibert?
First of all, thank you, Mr. Brock, for what you're doing. And I'm not going to ask the question of what part of your life plan, whether it was serving on the committee, being retired, or chairing the committee, that you were thinking might be a mistake. But please don't answer that. That's not what I was really wanting to ask.
Less time with my granddaughter is a mistake.
That is always a mistake. One question that struck me as I was reading the memo in advance is that it doesn't really set forth any information about how many claims in the total dollar value of claims that fall between $100,000 and $250,000, because the way the memo is structured, it talks only about a number of claims over $100,000. But that got me to wonder whether there was an option that was considered and rejected or not considered about seeing if the stop-loss insurance could be rewritten to trigger a lower amount.
So when we went out to bid, we looked at, we only had one company bid on our reinsurance last year, and they bid at $250,000. And we would like to move that down to 125 or something like that. But we'd have to bid that out and negotiate with the reinsurer. There are some that exceed the $250,000, and then there are some claims that, what the term is called laser out. They say, these three claims we know are going to be recurring, so we're going to not address them until you hit the $500,000 mark, because they know, that's a known expense to the insurance company. So it's a pretty, they're not in the business of losing money. They know our group. They know our claims. So the idea of giving you the $100,000 threshold was to give you a sense of the number of large claims, and that's really where the claims activity is. And it's, if you have four claims up to $250,000, even if they don't exceed that, that's a million dollars right there. And that's what we feel is driving our experience.
I think one of the points in my time on the Insurance Advisory Committee is that we used to work six to eight claims over $100,000. And now we're up to 12 to 14 claims. And that makes all the difference in the world. It isn't one or two big $800,000 claims because we've got the reinsurance. I think the committee has always followed the lead of the trust administrator, which is the town manager. We kind of got lulled into a good feeling with premium holidays and 0% increases. And when they said, well, we've got problems, oh, how bad can it be? And we probably waited too long before acting, and they are this bad. The other thing is, I'm very well aware of benchmarking and the relationship to that exists. I don't think the people involved are that aware of benchmarking.
Mr. Seibert?
I just want to make a couple of comments. And I will, I think it's okay if I make comments, but I will disclose that I benefit by being a retiree, so this affects me. But I'm trying to, I'm really speaking from a bigger point of view in following this. One, I, well, I have a lot of faith in both the manager and Mr. Brock. I've known you a long time, and I think that you did this with a lot of skill and integrity. So I think people have approached this, trying to manage the situation, and it kind of caught up with us because it was going so well. It's kind of like, you don't know how good you got it till it's gone, in terms of having low premiums and a healthy trust fund. But I agree with Mr. Bachman that we can't face this year after year. Even if we had a good year in two years, this up and down, it's not really acceptable because it makes it too hard to manage. I am expecting that whatever changes we make, and I do believe we have to make changes, it's going to cost more money. And it'll cost both the, you know, the town for their percentage share and the recipients more, whether it's because we have a group insurance, we have an insurance provider that is going to go up. But I think we have to understand that that's what's going to happen. And then I was struck, it's in the memo, but also we've talked about this before, that if Amherst offers a better plan, maybe it's the right level of benefit, but if it's better than the employers around us, we will attract people to choose that as their family plan provider. And that's just the reality. So it's a little bit like parking. If you don't charge enough, then they're going to park here and not there.
Always comes back, yeah.
So they're going to, and I've seen this other places I've worked, too. So it's just, you know, it's the rational thing to do. If it's a better program, you switch over. So I think we have to really be mindful of keeping the benefits pretty comparable to what else is being done by, whether it's the university or other large employers, or even some of the smaller ones. And I think that's just the new reality. And we don't have to go into that, but it's going to be a hard transition.
It didn't help when the GIC made their changes, and the pushback from those changes resulted them in changing their vote. There are still members of the committee that believe we can do nothing. We can go ahead and stay self-insured and manage our way out of here. I'm not sure that that's possible, and I'm not sure that that's financially effective. I try not to vote unless there's a tie or something. I have voted on several of the motions, but most of the members, although we have representation from non-union members, most of them are bargaining members. They are very involved in their own bargaining. And so this, you know, I got, from my old days, when we bargained health insurance and the contracts, yeah, it was a total package. When we've taken health insurance pretty much out of it, it has an effect on the town's ability to give increases and stuff. And we have to get people to understand that that's real and that you're getting a benefit in continued health insurance, you know? So it's not an easy, easy thing to do.
Other questions or comments?
Sure. So starting in a random place, might as well follow up on the GIC conversation. My husband's employed by UMass, and we're on that plan. And yes, it was going to be a very different conversation if GIC went to only three plans. And then we had employees who had the option of picking up the Town of Amherst plan instead of the relatively crappy three plans GIC was going to offer. And relatively crappy is indeed the technical term for the health insurance I currently have, which they were going to retain, and then two other options. Along those lines, as you continue to figure out all these different puzzle pieces, which we, you have done a great job of elaborating for us at several meetings now, how all those different factors play into it. And we appreciate that you brought up both, you know, other municipalities, and then also private employers, and then of course, UMass, which is a whole nother kettle of fish. But in terms of, I'm assuming that it's true, that it's still standard today to offer both the HMO and PPO option from at least one provider, as opposed to just saying, you get an HMO and that's all there is. I'm assuming that's still like, you know, industry standard, and that's why we would continue to do that.
We're required to do that.
We are required to do that by what?
I believe state law, or that requires, if I can confirm that for you.
The end of 32B.
Yeah.
Okay. Just because, like this document has been and like others have been, it's really helpful to be able to point people to these things and say, this is why we're doing what we're doing. This is how we got to this point. This is why, and this, for example, is why we're doing that, is that we're offering both beyond the fact that I assume it's probably comparable to what other places are doing. It's especially comparable if it's legal. So that would be worth pointing out. I really appreciate the detail that you put on page two in terms of the years of premium increases and decreases, for those of us who sort of remembered some of that. Again, having that in front of us is helpful. And so, for example, in FY '16, we had a premium decrease for those on the HMO, but we actually did an increase for those in the PPO. And another year, we were able to just keep them at zero. So we have done lots of adjustments. And again, that's, I think, valuable information to show people that we've been doing these things. But speaking of pages, if we could have page numbers and a date on this document, that would be super helpful because we've had variations of this document before, and I don't have any way of knowing which one's which at this particular moment in time. So that would be great.
Let's just jump on that. So this is a document we shared with every employee in the community, so they could see the information. Can I jump on a couple of other things while you're?
Sure. And then I was just going to ask, shall I ask one other, make some other complete separate comment that you've talked about in the past, and I wanted you to remind us of, which is that, and as Mr. Brock so helpfully gave us the segue for, health insurance and used to be part of collective bargaining agreements is not on the town side, per town, quote-unquote, area now, but it is still in the schools, which of course is our largest group of employees. So tell us about that again and how that's going to work, because they're in the middle of bargaining right now, too. But that means, not only, instead of just taking it into account like we do for bargaining, they're going to actually have to potentially change something that's in the contract or not, or?
Well, the school department is in the middle of negotiations with their bargaining unit. So I know they were having a meeting, they may be meeting right now, so I can't really comment on it. But they're aware of this situation. Both parties are aware of it, and I'm sure it's on the list of things that they're discussing.
But what I'm saying is, it's in their contract, so they can't, no matter what they say about, at the Insurance Advisory Committee stage, there's still that separate step for them that's part of their contract.
Yes. There's something in their contract that they have to address, but it's complicated because
Of course.
I'm the trust administrator, but the contract is not with me. The contract is between the school committee and the bargaining unit. The bargaining unit happens to bargain for the regional school district and the Amherst School Committee, who are town employees. So all these things sort of weave together, and we each have certain authorities to do. I mean, but we don't want to, we want to get to an agreed-upon place versus people saying, you don't have a right to do this. Or I'm saying, I'm going to do this whether you like it or not. That's just not a good place for, it's not the way we interact with our employees. We really work hard, and it's time-consuming, and it's education, and it's us listening and them listening. And so we work hard at not getting into that kind of confrontational mode. But both parties have certain rights, and the employees clearly, and they've, the teachers have clearly articulated that they know what their rights are. They're well-represented as well.
Thank you. Because again, that just follows up on the whole, there are so many complicated pieces to this, that, yeah, it's not just one singular decision. So thank you.
Mr. Seibert?
Follow-up for what Mr. Bachman said. You said this was circulated to all the employee groups?
Yeah.
Is it circulated to the retirees?
I don't think it did, actually.
I just want to make a pitch that
That was our bad, yeah.
Yeah. And just because clearly retirees have a huge interest in this as well, and it's easy to forget because it's a different list.
Yeah. So the other thing I would mention, two things. One is that, like Ms. Seibert, although I'm not retired, I am on the insurance plan. Wish I'm retired, but not yet. So it is, again, sort of an interesting situation to be in, but at the same time, one of the things I wanted to point out, just for people to recognize, is on the second page of this memo where you have fiscal year '13 through '18, year-to-date premium increases decreased. If you go back when fiscal year '06 or '07, there was a similar kind of spike in costs. And it required premium increases, a surcharge that was charged for a period of time. And it required premium increases, a surcharge that was charged for a period of time, and significant plan design was altered at that point. And we've kind of coasted on that for a while, to be perfectly honest. I mean, I think if you're an employee that's been employed during that whole period of time, it's all sort of washed out, and it's not too bad. And, and of course, the other thing for folks is that, you know, yeah, we could have just gone and put 2%, you know, doing a, done a 2% or 3% or 4% or 5% increase every year and all these things, and that's, you know, half what it is nationwide. But you didn't, then are foregoing what you could do with that in your operating budget, because this means you're not paving roads, or hiring staff, or doing other wonderful things we want our communities to do. And so, so these things are, you know, pitted against the other, these choices are pitted against choices of, you know, things we want our, our town government to do, our schools to do for, for our citizens. And so that's part of why we try to carry the, the trust balances, you know, safely and small as it can be. Because, you know, having a bunch of money sitting there not really doing much for anybody doesn't do anybody any good, but it would at this point when we've had these high claims. But we're going to have that boom and bust cycle because we have such a small group, quite frankly. And so, you know, there are things we could do around sort of maintaining a larger level of balance or a steadier percentage increase every year, but I think you don't get down to brass tacks of conversations about plan, design, changes, being comparable with neighbors, et cetera, et cetera, in some ways, until you get to these sort of harder points in time where, you know, the money's just not there and you have to make the choices. You know, it's hard to have that discipline. In the good years, it's hard to have the discipline and the foresight to sort of see, you know, how bad it can get. You know, I think if you were talking to us in fiscal '14, we'd have, you know, no, you know, no sense that it was going to do anything like it's done. I mean, we might think, oh, it's going to get more expensive at some point, but not to this level. And so it is a bit of the boom and bust cycle of a small, small group, which speaks a little bit to some of the suggestions about being fully insured by somebody else, or, you know, other changes that are discussed there, you know, help mitigate that small group thing a little bit. Other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Brock, for coming in.
Thank you for coming in.
We'll keep you posted.
Ms. Slaughter?
Yes.
I have one actual question that before Ms. Aldrich leaves, that is really budget and how this is going to be reflected into the budget, as opposed to the health insurance policy issues, which were issues we were addressing to Mr. Brock. The reason I brought up the whole question for, during the budget discussion about that one line item, the hotel motel tax that was coming in over, I did some quick calculations, and it seems like that's approximately $100,000 if you annualize it of additional revenue that we might be receiving that we didn't budget for. And so it made me realize that there are other variations that are in there, and I guess the question is, knowing that we have this large additional expense that we didn't budget for when the town meeting adopted the budget for the current year at the annual town meeting, which is increasing the cost side because of the employer share of the health insurance costs, are, is there a budget plan that goes with this that can, and where do we sit with that?
So as, as the claims mature, right now, we have data from January '31, which is seven months into the fiscal year, and we're monitoring it on a weekly, monthly basis. And once we know where we're headed, Ms. Aldrich makes projections all the time, and so we monitor those things. The, you know, the deficit, the IBNR, the tail of the claims are both very large numbers that, that the trust is responsible for paying, and as a trust is a standalone entity. And so the town and the employees would have to pay into the trust to make sure the trust is whole. So we have ideas, we need to get a better handle on the scope, and also what's going to happen in FY '19 and '20. And then, and our idea is that part of the financing plan of the current deficit would be incorporated into the FY '19 and '20 rates. So it'd be spread over time for the employees, so it's not one, like the surcharge that we talked about earlier.
Of course, what I'm referring to is not the rates and not the trust, but the fact that when you increase the rates, and they're payable in part by the town and in part by the employees, part by the employees falls on the employees and retirees, and the part that's attributable to the town falls on the town, so that there's an effect on the actual operating budget of the town that's a separate entity from the trust, as you pointed out. So what I was really referring to is where we stand with the, the budget that was presented earlier, and, but going for the rest of the year in comparison.
So I think Ms. Aldrich alluded to the fact that we're, we've cracked down on all discretionary spending. The idea is that we are trying to reserve as much as we can in our operating budgets to, because we know this problem is there, and we're going to try and manage it to the best of our ability, using limitations on what people are purchasing, basically, just not spending as much and hoping that we'll have surplus, and not hoping, expecting, knowing that we will have some surpluses.
Ms. Kruger?
Do I add anything to that?
I just, you might want to add to my comment. So I haven't tracked, before you get too excited about the hotel revenue being higher and maybe bearing that out, I've noticed that that business is very cyclical. So the busy part is the fall, and then later in the spring, and we're going into the quarters where that occupancy really falls. And I don't know if we've tracked the up cycle of hotel motel and the down, but just because we're up after the busiest part of our accommodation season doesn't tell me that we're going to stay there, because people just don't come here, December, January, February, and March. So I, I don't know if, Ms. Aldrich has seen that kind of a pattern. I, I see it in some of the things I do.
I'm not sure if you were asking if that would help us for fiscal year '18 or '19.
We're really talking about '18, and I appreciate the comment that was just offered by Ms. Kruger about any single item, including the one that she cited, you know, and I had referenced earlier, may not, in fact, because of the cyclical nature of the funding, be a, be a factor. But at what point are we going to look at comprehensively the '18 budget to really see where we're at? Because we really are being hit with a more significant change, I think, in the line items than we're normally at, and it might be helpful for us and the finance committee to know exactly where we are for the overall comprehensive consolidated budget now as compared to where we had expected to be when we adopted the budget, as far as projections through the end of the year.
Well, for 2018, we can't, we can't go back and look at revenues and reestimate our revenues, because our tax rate is set for 2018. So our only option for the 2018, if we, to cover the deficit in the health claims trust fund, is to have a vote from free cash, from reserves. And that would go into the trust fund so that we would not have a deficit, because it's legal to have an appropriation deficit, according to the DOR. So we'll have to have, make the trust fund whole, and that's where we would have to look at what the surcharge would be. Like Mr. Slaughter alluded to back in 2006, and we had this happen before, we did institute a surcharge to pay back the general fund for those appropriations, and the town, the town contributed a 75% or 80%, and the employees contributed their 25% or 30%, or 25% or 20%. But we can't go back and look at those revenues and increase them and say, we're going to use this to pay, because it would have to be an appropriation at town meeting, but you can't use that anyways because of the tax rate. And we do watch the trends on all of these. We have huge spreadsheets that show the trend of, if we think it's going to stay a steady upward trend, then we'll adjust our budget estimates for that in normal years.
Well, thank you. That's very helpful, and I'll just conclude it, because I don't want to drag this on longer, but I think if we are going to have to use any significant amount of free cash in order to make the budget balance at the end of the year, if we can offer some sort of projection to town meeting before it starts, I think that it's very helpful to remind town meeting that we put in free cash. Part of the reason for building free cash was because unforeseen things can happen. And to remind town meeting that free cash isn't a, just a piggy bank to go to for whatever, but that there are purposes of free cash, and this is one of them. And that's, I think, why I've driven it a little bit.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. Aldrich. Thank you, Mr. Brock, for coming. At this time, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is rental appeals board charge. Sort of sketch that out a little bit.
And sketch, I might be the right word. In your packet, you have a draft rental appeals board charge. As you recall, the bylaw anticipates the creation of a rental appeals board, which has not been necessary to date. Previously, you established the membership of the rental appeals board as being the, whoever's the current chair of the, of the select board, whoever's the current chair of the planning board, whoever's the current chair of the zoning board of appeals. And then they would be called into action if there were an appeal of, of the building commissioner's decision. And, you know, I think the board pointed out, well, we should have a charge, and so we put one together, but, so it's for a first look at it, for your comments and feedback. We'd appreciate it.
Ms. Kruger?
So on your desk tonight, you can see my incredibly clear edits. I know that they are just so, so very clear. But basically, there, it's a couple of issues. One is that this is not based on one of our more recent and accurate formats of a charge. So that's why a bunch of stuff is missing from the top. For example, SME status, special municipal employee status is missing. That's a separate topic, and something we should plan to either vote on tonight or vote on at a future meeting, because obviously, all three of these, it needs special municipal employee status, because these people represent at other bodies, because that's their job is to represent at other bodies. So just to put the icing on the cake, it seems like we need the SME status, but of course, that's supposed to be at the top of the charge also. It's also supposed to indicate, and honestly, it's been a while since I looked at the more recent one that I worked on, which is time-limited or ongoing, and in this case, it would be ongoing, whereas we've had a number of things that have been task forces lately that are time-limited, you know, do a certain project, like Dog Park, that we'll talk about later, and then be done, rather than an ongoing committee. And another area is associated with enabled under-town bylaw is not the terminology we use, but it should say town bylaw, and it should say yes, and it should say the actual town bylaw, which is written there. And I believe maybe member appointments was trying to get it term-length, and I think in this case, we're just in the unusual case of because we picked chairs when we had this last conversation, and formally, it's completely different than anything else we normally do, unless we looked back at what the JCPC charge says, for example, where they appoint their own. So that's not as important. But just in terms of trying to get that mask accurate in terms of the frame, then in terms of the rewrite that I did there at the bottom, which I know my handwriting is atrocious, what I was trying to get at is that it's my understanding that this board only has one purpose. It's not a primary function, it's an only function. And its only function is to be called into action if an appeal is filed within 14 days of the code official's decision to suspend the residential rental permit. Now, in order to do that job, I wrote this, I totally made this section up, so you guys can rip it as however you want, but it said, "The RIB will develop and from time to time, review and revise the following: the criteria for evaluating appeals, the procedures, rules, and/or regulations for advertising duly noticed public hearings, conduct of the duly noticed public hearing." As some of you recall, we have not had a lot of experience with some kinds of public hearings we do, unlike, say, the planning board, historical commissioner, conservation commission, and documentation of the written decision. So that's not like an ongoing thing. It is, and it isn't. And in that, their job is to do the appeal, but at some point, they're going to need to get together and do those things to support them being able to do the appeal. So that's what I was trying to get at when I rewrote that, rather than making it seem like all those things are equal, because those things are not all equal. There's really only one thing that's critical for them to do, let's just, but hopefully, we've set them up for success by giving them time to make those previous arrangements. And, you know, we've waited since 2013 to put this into effect, and so we may continue to get lucky and not need to have that planning meeting, because we all have a bazillion other things on our plates. But at least it is listed here, and I thank you for the structure that you gave us in terms of it being listed here, what things you would want to go ahead and address before you had to deal with that first appeal. So, thank you.
Ms. Kruger?
Well, after that rewrite, my thing is really minor. So in my universe, the bylaw is never hyphenated. So kill that, because it's inconsistent, everyone does it differently, but you've basically changed that anyway, but when we do a rewrite in the next version, up in the upper right corner, enabled under-town bylaw, take it, please remove the hyphen, because it was. My only other thing that's, that's kind of different, when, Ms. Kruger, when you say documentation of the written decision, would that be a written decision that's then filed with the town clerk? How would somebody find that written decision?
That's an excellent question, that I don't believe the bylaw actually covers, and I don't know if we have practice of other communities to look, because this is a fairly interesting thing that Amherst does, that others perhaps do not. So yes, unlike, say, conservation commission, historical commission, what would that?
We could potentially add that to this, because I think that's, you know, instead of trying to find it in someone's files 10 years from now, that's the place to file the written decision.
So it says documentation of the written decision, but if you want to mandate, rather than letting the three people develop where it's going to be, then that would be the way to do it.
Well, I just added, you know, and filed with the town clerk.
So if you give us the leeway to take this back and make the changes, I don't think there's any urgency to it, but we'll have the building commissioner look at this and review it with the town clerk as well, and bring it back to you at a future meeting. That's great.
That sounds good.
And when you bring it back to us, if you would just make sure there's also a motion about SME status, so we don't forget and have to make it up on the bylaw. That'd be great.
Any other further comment on, on the?
And what about a date on the charge, so we know what version?
It would show voted at the bottom.
Oh, at the bottom, when we're done?
In the theory, when we vote. It would show we voted, and it would also show a separate date for the SME status. But you're right, that should be part of, the word template is the one I've been looking for. Thank you. That's where it needs to be. You're right.
So if there's not further comment offered for that, then I think we'll move on to our next agenda, on which municipal property uses and disposition process policy. We have a memo for, Mr. Zomeck, if you'd like to take us through that?
In short, what you have before you really is very similar. Essentially, what I did is I took out all the old boilerplate, if you will, out of an earlier document that we discussed back in November. We've had two discussions on this to date, and this will be our third conversation. And what I did was try to take out all of the references, of course, to other cities, other towns with municipal real property policies, and try to boil it down to really what could amount to a draft policy. And I'm happy to work with you tonight, get some more feedback on it. I did just want to tell you what I have been doing in the meantime, since last we met on this. We've met, as I said, twice on this topic, had, had it on the select board agenda. I've met with all the department heads at least once, some of them two or three times for feedback on this. We've begun gathering data on municipally-owned property in our database. I've met with the conservation commission to get feedback from them. They are very supportive of a process and a policy coming forth. I have also met multiple times with, I've not met with the entire Affordable Housing Trust, but I've met multiple times with John Horneck, the chair, and at least twice with twice with Rita Farrell, their staff consultant, on this topic, and gotten some feedback from the, through the chair, from the trust. And they appear to be very supportive of moving this process forward. There's probably a little asterix on that in that they are considering, as the chair knows, the East Street School and a possible alternative to that property going through this policy, but we'll save that for another night. And then I know Chris Brestrop, the planning director, has also discussed this with the planning board. I did not go to that meeting myself, but I know the planning board is aware of this. And Christine did not receive any significant negative feedback on getting started with the process. As I look at this, I think of this as something we, to some degree, need to start. And we will have some test cases, if you will, come through the process. And I think we're going to learn. We've never, my understanding is we've never had a policy or process like this. At least, I've been with the town for 13, 14 years. We've not done it. I think we're going to learn as we go. And I suspect that I and the town manager will be back before you as we learn how to do this. And there will be some policy adjustments. My goal would be to start and begin the process and start to do some of the research, get the database going. And again, as I said before at an earlier meeting, we expect there's fewer than a dozen properties that we think will come through this process. And we might start with four or five. So I'll stop there.
Let's take over first. Ms. Brewer?
If I could just say briefly, thank you so much for all you did to get us to this point, because we really appreciated the way that you've outlined it for us up to this point. You know, this is how this town's doing it, this is how this place is doing it. And then we knew that eventually, we would need a thing that was an actual policy. So thank you for bringing us to this stretch without just jumping into this in the first place. And I appreciate the reordering at the end associated with, I had felt like, even though we all knew what it meant, it was confusing in terms of tracking, you know, whether or not it had to, it was up to the select board to take it to town meeting. And then if the select board said, no, it wasn't going to go to town meeting, that the only way it could actually finally be done is if it went through town meeting. The part that the select board could waive wasn't the taking it to town meeting part. They could only waive some other aspects of it. So we just want to be super clear to people that it would have to go to town meeting if it was going to actually be acted upon. And the, I would hope, without getting into the conversation you alluded to, that the trust would understand that they could fit anything, conversation about the East Street School potentially under number 10. Because if we don't put East Street School through this process as a test case, I'm not sure why we're bothering to do this at all. I mean, East Street School is the main reason we needed this policy after all these years of discussing different variations. So I would think that item 10 about waiving and varying would accommodate any creative things they want to do associated with that. But I don't, I don't know why we would exempt, give them any impression that we were exempting any discussion of East Street School from this policy. I would hope that they would be, if anything, the first test case. I can already hear people talking about a performing arts center at the fire station that's still occupied as being another test case. Still occupied being the critical point. But thank you.
So I will paint a little bit of the picture about East Street School later when I get my member report. But anyway.
Okay. If you could bear with me, I had a couple of questions and comments. And I am pleased to see it. It's been coming, this process has been coming along. I don't, I think the East Street School conversation has underscored the need to do this. I don't think it's the reason we're doing it. I think it's been long awaited and important. I was particularly interested in the, this clarifies in the second paragraph at the beginning of the document, about the authorization to dispose surplus real property. And it also, and I did have some questions about how this would relate to our municipal affordable housing trust. But partway, so all town owned property, I kind of underlined all in the first sentence of that paragraph. And then town meeting, partway down, "Town meeting must also change the use of the property and/or transfer the custody of the property." And then it gives the citation, Mass General Law, Chapter 40, 15A. So one question I had, and I'm going to, I'll go through all of mine, but if you could just kind of follow. If we're looking at, for example, the East Street School, and the trust wanted to have the custody transferred to them, it sounds like that would require a town meeting action. Some question about that. And then the next sentence goes on, if the property is being transferred, and then it says, "The board needs to make a determination before or after town meeting." And I was just confused, before or after town meeting? Looks like it's kind of hanging out there. Maybe it's just grammatical, that it does not need the property for the purposes which it was held. So I'm glad we clarified about the value could be by the assessor, but is best practices by an appraiser. That's in here, and I thought that was good. Page two, under the section, "Policy and Process for Disposing of Surplus Real Property," I was thinking, because of that issue about the transfer of the care and custody, or transfer of the custody, maybe we want to also add a number in here about a policy to determine when and how, what the criteria would be to transfer the custody. Because it doesn't, it doesn't really talk about that. It just talks about disposition. But sometime, there's often a first step where one department or board has it, and it's going to another, how do we decide when it's ripe to be transferred? I'm almost done. "Under five advisory groups recommendation to the town manager shall include B, the assessed and appraised value," I think it's supposed to be and/or the appraised value. Five B?
Mm-hmm.
And then, this is six G you have about the restrictions can be placed, making recommendations about the restrictions. And I had a question mark if G might best be under five or both in five and six, which is where the advisory group makes recommendations about what restrictions might be placed on the property before it gets used for whatever, or goes into this surplus process. So I don't have an answer. Maybe in both. And then six D, assessing, making recommendations on the impact of sale and proposed use of the property on the abutting landowners and surrounding neighborhood. Why, how are you going to do that? That, to me, is a little bit of a landmine unless you know what that means. The only last one I have is under next steps, my final comment. The third bullet, "Develop a corresponding policy that would establish the priorities for determining a property as surplus?" Question mark. I don't get corresponding policy. Develop a corresponding policy separate from this, as part of this. I just, you know, this is a draft, so that's just, as a reader, I struggled with some of that.
Yeah, I thought that last bullet might come up. And we might soften that a little bit. But my understanding in talking to staff about that was that, and town council, was that we, as a town, we should, it reminds me a little bit of the CPAC, developing kind of some priorities. In other words, we would gather from CPAC, from the municipal affordable housing trust, from CONCOM, not new information, but we would pull together a short, policy might be too strong, but a guiding document to say, you know, in 2018, the town of Amherst has established strong and clear goals on the need for affordable housing, as referenced in the municipal affordable housing trust's Plan X. The master plan speaks to this. So that we would have something that we're not, every property is not, we're not looking at it simply in a, oh, well, this might be good for conservation, this might be good for, no. These are the guiding principles, if you will, that we're using to say, and a good example would be the need for affordable housing. Whereas, we've been redefining, if you will, and refocusing our goals for open space in the last five to 10 years. Those are different than they were in the 1980s. So I think that document needs to be living, a living document that isn't, it's appropriate for 2018, 19, maybe a five-year period. So that's what I was trying to get at.
I just thought, that helps. I just would suggest, just in terms of word crafting, that you might spend some more time just refining and, not as long as maybe your answer to me verbally, but trying to get that into that section.
We can do that.
Questions or comments?
I was just going to recommend something more along the lines of criteria for that last concept. Because in some ways, it's also analogous to the community development strategy that Block Grant uses, right? Every year, they look and they say, based on all the different policy documents we have in town, these are our priorities for this year. So it's a strategy, it's a set of criteria, but so as not to confuse it with being a different policy than this policy.
Right. And if I could, just to address one other question that Ms. Brewer brought up, the issue of care, custody, and control, what we're learning from council is that absolutely, there are different ways that a town can work with a municipal affordable housing trust. And there are many examples in Massachusetts. And in fact, through town meeting, the entire property does not need to be transferred all at once through deed. In other words, there are ways that the trust could have certain rights to explore development for A, B, or C while not taking full custody of the property. The town may still take care of the building, you know, keep it secure, et cetera, et cetera. And then eventually, if a viable option is determined for housing, then a transfer could take place.
Just a quick follow up on that. So my understanding, I think reinforced by this document, is, for example, if the East Street School were to go to the municipal trust for their exploration period, for their custody, that would require a vote of town meeting for the transfer of custody, and then later, or maybe simultaneous, a vote of town meeting to authorize the disposition for sale or lease for affordable housing.
That's my understanding as well, that it could take place in two votes or one vote, depending on what the trust wanted and what they asked the town to do. The other-
It would have to address those two issues. Those both would have to be spelled out in the vote, custody and eventual disposition.
Yes. There's going to need to be a vote even before that, because in our research, we don't appear to have a vote from the school committee. So we're going to need a vote from the school committee, essentially giving back the school to the town to make clear that it is under the town's control.
And that's a town meeting vote. So that's three.
That's just a school committee vote.
The school committee vote on record, and then the two are simultaneous, two.
Correct. So again, I think we're going to learn as we go here a little bit. I think this provides a framework. I'm happy to make a few edits here. And then, I mean, I need to come back before you, but certainly through the town manager, we could get this approved at a future date, whatever you'd like.
Ms. Brewer?
I was just going to mention that when you're editing, so page four, I think, is when we ended up talking more about the corresponding policy and the potential words, criteria, and strategy, and the way you had explained that. That is, of course, also then talked about on page two under item three. So just so that you know, it's in both. Recognize that it's in both places, that we're trying to avoid that particular use of policy in that section, because this is the policy. That's something else.
Excellent. Thank you.
Other comment or question for Mr. Zomeck on this item? Thank you for this. I will, I do have one question. Have you mentioned to Mr. Horneck about the school committee needing to take action?
He's very, very aware of that. So-
That's good. I won't steal my own thunder from a later conversation about things that happened at the trust meeting last week. But anyway, so if there's not further questions or comments on this, thank you for that. And why don't we move into 4F, which is project updates on a variety of things?
I wonder if I could ask the chair, would it be possible, since Ms. Ciccarello is here, to do the sustainability committee first? Would that?
Absolutely, if that's all right with the rest of the body. I presume it is. So yes, that's, that's fine with me. So we'll go to the recommendation for creation of sustainability committee. Do you want to start this?
I do, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you. For many, well, since I've been here, and it's not very long, but you've had it on my goal list from the very beginning, that you wanted the town to continue its focus on sustainable issues and sustainability initiatives. And as we've thought about this, we've, I want to first recognize the amount of work that we've already done, and I've tried to document some of these things. And Ms. Ciccarello came up with a list that's a page long of all the things that we have done over the years. What this doesn't include is all the work that we've done at wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plant, a number of other departments. These are sort of things that have happened in general for the town. So we've done a lot. And that's the message here. But I think we can do more. And I think that the expectation that you have set is that you expect us to do more. And so we're prepared to do that. And I think we're set up to do that. So as we conceptualized this, one of the things was, there are, you can do 100 things. There's a thousand things. It's so big. Sustainable stuff goes from, you know, the way you build a building, the way you source the materials, to electric vehicles, to lights, to how we provide water to, at events. And it can be a million things. And sometimes, there are so many things that we get, we struggle with inaction. So I think what we sort of need is a overarching group that's going to first establish goals for us on what we're trying to achieve. And then from that group, there will emerge smaller groups that would not be necessarily part of the larger group, but would be part of the overall strategy to focus specifically on, so zero energy buildings, or, you know, aggregation, aggregating electricity in the town, or working on solid waste issues. And I guess tonight, what I gave you a brief memo to sort of get you start thinking about it and how you want to conceptualize it. This is one person's basically conception, you know, idea on one way to go. It may not be the best. And so it's just a way to sort of open up the dialogue a little bit. We have Ms. Ciccarello here, who's been working in the field for a long, long time, and she's able to contribute her way in as well. I'm not sure if you have anything to add, but she's drafted much of this. And so in my mind, what's really needed is for us to establish a set of goals that we, as a community, want to achieve. There are many models out there, other communities that have done a really good job on this, City of Cambridge, obviously. But a number of communities are out in front on this issue. And I think we expect ourselves to be one of the leaders in this area, at least leaders in Western Massachusetts. And I think that we're not far off from being that way. But we need an organized and set of goals that we want to reach for, and then a strategy for meeting those goals. Otherwise, what I fear is that there will be initiative overload. Individuals will come with individual projects, and every individual project will have merit, will think, and it'll be unrealistic or unreasonable for us to say no to any particular thing unless we have a criteria. And what's really important for us, especially for our staff, is to say, what can I say no to? What can I say yes to? Does it fit in with an overall policy and where we want to put our best efforts? And so I think that's why we need some, a group of people, volunteers from the community, who are going to help us conceptualize this. And the great thing about this is we've got some really, really talented people in the community who are already thinking along these lines. And we have our institutional partners who are active in addressing these issues on their own campuses, Hampshire and Amherst and UMass. And we can learn from the efforts- Amherst and UMass, and we can learn from the efforts that they have made, and in fact, fold them into our efforts, because I think we should be looking at this as a community-wide initiative, not just town buildings or things. We may want to start with a few things that are town-oriented, but ultimately, we're looking at ourselves as a whole community that includes these three institutions. And I think there's a lot of cross-fertilization that can happen. So that's the sort of concept of this, and be really eager to hear, I don't know if either of you want to add into anything, but eager to hear some thoughts on this, what we should do next.
Thank you, Stephanie Ciccarello, Sustainability Coordinator for the town. And I would say that Amherst has been in this role and doing this work for quite some time, as noted by Mr. Balkman, and we are actually, and many other communities, noticed and recognized as a community that's doing quite a bit in the field of sustainability and energy efficiency and dealing with the issue of climate change, because we have been doing this for so long. But we are at a point where a lot of our focus has been really at the municipal building level, and just on what the town operations are doing to address this issue. And we're at a point where we really do need to sort of make it a broader, more holistic, town-wide effort. And that is really what other communities that we have been working very closely with, for instance, the City of Northampton, the City of Greenfield, some other communities in the area, are now looking really more holistically at their entire and broader community. So that's really the point that we're at, and why we need input from not just the town government portion of, you know, what's happening with the town buildings and town operations, but we need to look at what's happening within our broader community, and so we need representation from the community as well. And we need a lens, we need to sort of look at sustainability and all the work that we do in the community from that lens, of how it impacts the long-range vision and sustainability of our community as a whole. So that's really what this committee would really be charged with.
Questions or comments for the, Mr. Steinberg?
Hello. I do note that we had a very successful enterprise to reach out to make a difference for homes within our community with Solarize Amherst, and that was an extraordinary success. So I think that we really have done quite a bit, and I'm pleased that we're going to continue to look to doing more. The question that I was pondering was, how much of the various projects that we've been working on have been driven by staff, and how much have been driven by volunteers? And are we looking to the committee to be the core of the volunteers to do the work, or are we looking for the committee, as Mr. Balkman said, to set the goals? And the recruitment of volunteers is a separate enterprise. And the reason I bring that up is that the Recycling and Refuge Management Committee very much is not just establishing goals, but actually organizing itself to do the grunt work to achieve the goals. And I guess I just look for clarity as we move forward, so that we are sure that we are charging the committee appropriately for the role, and if we are not going to have the committee moving forward, taking the citizen volunteer component of implementation, that we know how that's organized and placed.
So if it's okay, Mr. Scher, I think there's a dialogue, because I don't have answers and Stephanie, but we have opinions, and so that's the type of thing, our response. My sense is that we do need volunteers to do the work, and that's where the core of the work will begin. I think we do need a volunteer group that is educated on this areas, on these areas already, to help us work out an overall plan. But I think there will be subgroups, you know, I think of the Dog Park Task Force, for instance, that they have an overall group, but they have small groups that go off and work on their own, on location and rules and things like that. You know, it'd be that type of thing, that we would have subgroups that would be going out and working on, say, energy aggregation, or whatever it is that we really want, transportation might be one.
Yeah, I would just add that it's really going to vary. There will be moments and projects and times when there will be a requirement for staff to sort of make a commitment to maybe either move us towards a campaign or project, for instance, with Solarize. I had a very large role in the beginning in terms of the application process, but when it came time to actually then implement the program, we had a group of community volunteers who were our Solarize team, and they were the ones who actually went out and did the hard work of the marketing. They were, you know, they were at events, they were going door-to-door, they had a lot of different projects and campaigns that they created to advertise the opportunity for folks to install solar on their homes during that timeframe. So it was a very specific targeted campaign, it was a very specific and targeted timeframe as well. So I think it, you know, it depends, there's, again, there's a lot of opportunity here, but, and again, it's not, it's not something I could answer today either, because we really, that's kind of what we need the committee for, is to help us frame what the priorities would be moving forward as well.
So I'm going to jump in at this moment. I think for me, when I think about this, I think about, we may want to consider, in regard to, you know, sort of developing a group like this, is, in some aspects of what we do, there are certain of our committees and boards that have certain professional expertise required. Like the Board of Health has, you know, certain requirements, this is on review, you have to have like an architect. That might be a wise thing to put in here. And the reason why I say that is because I think the most, maybe not the most, but one of the critical things that, when you're setting the goals, are things that have highest leverage. And it depends on the area of sustainability you're looking at, as to what might be a high-leverage thing. As you said, you know, any idea that people bring forward is noble and worthwhile, but is it the best at this point? Is it the kind of thing that moves us the most in whatever directions we choose? And so I think we need to, you know, identify what those areas are that we think are most important to us, or define what the broad categories are, and then within those categories, what are the highest-leverage sort of things? And I think people that have expertise in those areas will be valuable in sort of framing the conversation, because you can get into things that are, you know, very good and noble and have an impact, but their impact for the effort is small relative to other things we could do, and we want to probably take on those things that have the largest impact first, I think. There may be varying opinions about that, and obviously, you know, a lot of it is opinion-based as far as what is important or what has the highest leverage or that sort of thing, but I think that's something that I would offer as suggestions as we move forward in this, is to think about what expertise do we want to bring on. We have some in-house, obviously, you know, yourself included in that, but I think there's plenty in our community. We have the, you know, fortunate nature of having, you know, a university and two colleges in city limits that think about these things, you know, professionally, all day long. So, you know, we should tap into that as best we can and help that, to help people with good intentions and lots of energy to keep them focused on things that have the highest leverage. Maybe my suggestion.
A couple of things, just to reinforce what my colleagues have been saying. Mr. Steinberg's question, and then Mr. Balkman's answer about policy versus implementation, I think is almost a broader conversation, because it comes up often with other committees in the work, like, when is the committee there for policy, and when are they expected to roll up their sleeves and do the work? So there's different ways to look at that. I think your point about the professional, looking at some professional skill set, not for every, everything, what I worry about, I mean, I think we're going to move ahead and create this entity, and right now, we're just kind of, you know, fleshing out some ideas and different thoughts we've had, so this, I'm assuming we're going forward. But some of the, I worry that, from, I worry that sometimes, depending on the composition of the group, or maybe the charge, you get, people are advocating for their interest area or the thing they're most passionate about. I think we do have to be able to prioritize, because we're not going to, resources and time are finite, and so we have to make choices all the time. And I wouldn't want to see, well, these two people want to do building stuff, and these two people want to do trash, and then you sort of cancel each other out. But people who can, who are excited about the overview, and the set of compromises that have to be made in order to move the town as a whole forward, you know, the picking and choosing kind of thing that you were talking about, that that problem interests them and not just, you know, whatever. I mean, advocacy is great, and being passionate is great, but I don't want this to splinter out into one of these and one of those kind of things, because I want this to really help us have a clear vision of where we're going.
I'm not sure if it's exactly along those lines, but I like to hope so. And so one of the things I would like, that I really like about this, is all the things we've talked about, but also the idea of bringing all these different groups who have been working on things individually and in set little areas before, like, as is mentioned on Ms. Ciccarello's list, we had the Energy Conservation Task Force in 2000 for some number of years, and then it just kind of dwindled away, because we have other things to do and other priorities. But the work that group did would be entirely appropriate under this umbrella. And looking at this umbrella, so, you know, how you structure it, what you call it, certainly UTAC, that, you know, I've been part of, likes to argue about what's an executive committee, and what's a subcommittee, and what's a steering committee. No offense to Mr. Zomack, who's doing a fantastic job over there, it's just, you know, the way people structure things in their minds and what that means. But, you know, we previously had work on climate action by Ms. Ciccarello, with also some volunteers involved, but it wasn't really a formal town committee in some respects, and some things were and some things weren't. And I would definitely like to see recycling and refuse management be considered for moving under this umbrella. So again, you'd have, so that you don't just have, you know, one of these and one of these and one of these, it's kind of like you have this overall group, and then when it's decided to move on with certain things, then a whole other committee can get just picked that may have one or two people with expertise, and then a whole bunch of just really dedicated people who want to do it, so that you have all those branches off the committee, but so that they all know what each other's working on, and whether it's, you know, bringing us another thing about how we have to buy recycled paper towels, or whatever it is, it's not just tell procurement to do that, but that everybody knows that that's all part of the bigger picture. So, you know, not setting it up in parallel with recycling and refuse, but with the idea that recycling and refuse would fit nicely within this, because the work they're already doing, it makes a lot of sense to me to look at this as a sustainability effort and figure out what all goes in that, so that, as you say, you can make the hard decisions about what to pursue quickly and what to maybe put off for a little while.
Mr. Wall?
Along the same lines, I like the way the town manager presented it, because it reminds me a little bit of the master plan, you know, when you've got something, you can say, is it in conformity with this overall set of goals? And then it's much easier for the employees, because there is a lot of pressure on staff to do things, and we have very active citizens with lots of ideas, so I think that's a good way to frame it, maybe.
The other thing I would mention, if I could, just talking about this, is as we move ahead, and depending on the circumstances and situation, I think we, I'm not sure how to sort of articulate this without being sort of overly dictating the direction, but the idea of impact, so we want to broaden to the larger community, now you're starting to impose things upon the citizenry, whether it be our business community, our homeowners, what's the impact of that, and how to evaluate that well as we move ahead? Because, you know, you can create, you know, zoning that forces certain kinds of things to happen, you can have unintended consequences along with the intended consequences, that price people out of our, you know, it could run counter to, you know, other efforts we're trying to make in affordable housing, perhaps, or we might squeeze businesses out, because these kinds of changes are onerous, and, you know, it's just not something that people have a way to, you know, may or may not be able to evaluate, be able to evaluate well. And so that's, you know, again, gets back to some of the expertise question that I raised earlier, but also just, I think that's a piece of the puzzle as well, is as we make these, you know, movements in these different areas that we keep, and we try to broaden it out, you know, what constraints are we imposing upon other people, and what is the impact of those things as we move ahead? So does it change the timelines we work under, or does it change the degree to which we do things? And do we put then, you know, reevaluation points in those sort of actions and activities?
So I just wanted to address a few things that were said. I guess, first of all, I just want to say, in terms of the Energy Task Force, that when they came together, they really had a specific goal, which was to create a climate action plan, which was done, and it was actually disbanded after the climate action plan was completed, and we were getting into the phase of implementation. And what happened was, once we sort of got into that phase of implementation, the sort of necessity of having that organized group wasn't necessary quite as much anymore, and also, we were moving towards the direction of becoming a green community. At that point, green communities became available, and there was really a shift in the focus of looking at this issue. I think because, you know, there's been a movement at the federal level to move away from being involved in, for instance, the Paris Accord, that I think we're looking more now at specifically addressing climate change again. That's kind of, seems to be a renewed focus, and not just talking about energy efficiency, but really looking at climate change once again. So I think having a group focused on this effort, absolutely at the more, the broader community level, is important, and I hear your concerns, and I share them, that we don't want to be imposing things on the citizenry in town in a way that would feel onerous to them. I mean, this is something that, hopefully, there will be broader support within the community, and something the community will want and want to work towards and be part of. In doing that, I think what we really need is to have some kind of a plan, and my hope would be that when we gather a committee together, that we create some kind of a plan and a framework to move forward with this work, because you really can be over the map, and as Ms. Kruger pointed, you have people with their specific interests. So in order to make that sort of a more equitable playing field, I think we need to have some kind of a plan or strategy that we create as a committee to move forward, and so that will sort of keep that in check to some degree. And it will also identify what those priorities are, and by all means, absolutely, we have an incredible pool of talent within this community, and absolutely, we should tap into them, and there are several people, I think, that would be very eager to participate in this effort already.
Further comment or questions for the manager and staff on this? Ms. Brewer?
Just because I can't resist a small edit on the first line when it says, "regarding", and it says, "an Amherst that is resilient and sustainable." I thought the title for what we're doing is "A Resilient and Sustainable Amherst." We get rid of the "that" is, and I'm offering that, and you can keep it the way you have it, or?
It's interesting, because as Stephanie pointed out, sustainable Amherst is already, is that has labeled the Amherst College Initiatives. Sustaining Amherst is our, the town, so there's, these words are, so we want something that sort of recognizes that, who we are, so sustaining the Amherst is the one that we've used as a town, but if you, if you.
So they don't say college after theirs?
Nope.
Well, then let's just take theirs and make them add the word college.
They have the Twitter account.
They get payers for the privilege.
It's all about the Twitter.
So thank you both very much. Ms. Brewer?
When you write the charge, that I'm sure we're going to suggest you please go ahead and do, is there surely some reference you can make to the master plan?
It does say, it does have it referenced someplace. It talks about.
But the charge itself should reference the master plan.
Maybe that was the disposition of property one.
Yeah. We're doing so much planning.
Say the other one.
That's right.
So thank you all very much.
So next steps would be, we will work on this, a charge, sort of steps going forward to sort of lay out a map on where this might go, and bring that back to you for further conversation.
Just the last, I was glad to see that your concept includes folding in the recycling and refuse, because I was looking at this, saying, we really need this, but I have a sort of, my no net gain of committees, so this would actually accomplish the no net gain.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. So now, we'll go back to 4F, which involves project updates on a variety of topics.
4F, that's.
That's right. So if you.
Great, thank you. And again, I will respect your time and the time this evening. I know you have many more agenda items, but the. you have many more agenda items, but the town manager asked me to give you and the public out there a very quick overview of some of the exciting projects that we have on the, on the front burner. And it is going to be a pretty exciting winter and spring and summer construction season, we hope. I wanted to talk very briefly, and I'm going to go pretty quickly. I'm happy to maybe go back at the end, and if you have any questions, just note them and we can, we can zip back through. But I have five projects and then one minor update that I think the manager may want to give on Sweetser Park. I have a slide on Sweetser. But let me start with where we're headed on Community Field. As you know, the REC Working Group is currently focused on creating a master plan for the area you see before you on the screen, Community Field, the high school and the middle school. These areas have been identified really as our core recreational field facilities in town. And we are looking, we have hired, using CPA funds, Weston and Sampson, an engineering and design firm out of Boston with extensive experience in master planning for recreational facilities. We're very excited to be working with them. They came out in December and January to do, before it snowed actually, and then after as well, to do some recon and some baseline research out here in town. They met with the REC Working Group, they met with the AD, they met with facility staff and my staff, and they are beginning to put together this master plan for this core area that you see, that you see before you on the, on the screen. We are planning a public meeting on this topic for February 28th at 7:00 PM. That will, an announcement of that will be going out very soon, in the next day or two. It'll be at 7:00 PM in the town room hosted by the REC Working Group. And the idea there is for us to gather input from coaches, from parents, from athletes about the current conditions, the configuration, ideas, concepts, hopes, dreams about what these fields and facilities could be. We, you'll note that Community Field not only includes the football field, it's really a complex of football, softball, baseball, and the War Memorial Pool. So they will be looking at that facility as well. You know that there is a very old playground associated with War Memorial Pool that clearly needs work. They'll be looking, of course, at the track and the soccer field. We know through our communication with school personnel that the track is in dire need of some improvement. So we have town and school staff as well as committee and board members on the REC Working Group. We're going to be pulling in Mr. McPherson, our new facilities director as well, and I'm slated to meet with him in the next week or so to kind of update him on this. So I think I'll keep moving and then we can come back as need be. This was referenced earlier in the evening, another very exciting project, and that is being put forth by the Dog Park Task Force. After some many months of exploring both public and private land in town, the committee with a recommendation from me, we have landed on trying to utilize, exploring the utilization of a small piece of the south landfill identified up in the right-hand corner there, off of Old Belcher Town Road. We really need about an acre and a half, maybe two acres of the old, or we're trying to call it the south landfill, because old and new confuses folks. We have, working with the chair and the various members, we have made presentations to a number of boards and committees in town. And we recently, as recently as last week, got a recommendation from CPAC for $90,000 to recommend a town meeting to spend to explore the full feasibility of putting the dog park on the south landfill. That would include surveying, permitting work, engineering work. As you can imagine, this is not the easiest piece of property, but it is town-owned. There are very few encumbrances on it, but we do have to explore and work with DEP on assessing its appropriateness and some of the potential impacts, of course, to the cap. The cap is the most important thing, if you will, in keeping that landfill secure for generations to come. So we'll be working with DEP. Berkshire Design Group has volunteered to do a, in kind, a concept for the dog park. Peter Wells, who lives in Amherst and has, his firm has designed a number of dog parks in the region. And our hope is to put that design with a grant application to the Stanton Foundation. The Stanton Foundation has offices in New York and Boston, and they are the lead funder of dog parks in Massachusetts. And I believe we can secure a grant up to $225,000 for the construction of a dog park. So we're in the feasibility stage. We'll be working with DEP. This will have to dovetail, if you will. I'll be talking about solar in a minute, but we will have to work very closely with our team, Mr. Mooreing. I've been consulting with Mr. Mooreing, Ms. Chicorello on this, but we'll have to be working very closely with our solar team on this because we know we need the majority of the south landfill, which is up on the screen, as mitigation for our solar project on the north landfill. So again, we're creating, excuse me, the Dog Park Task Force has much of their information already up on the town website, and we'll be adding to that as we go. So the next step would be a concept design done by Berkshire Design and then the Stanton Foundation grant. So very exciting to be moving that forward. The next project is what we call the North Common Main Street Parking, now a combined project. As the select board knows, we do have funds available through town meetings, CPAC funds, to design improvements to the North Common, the area between Spring Street and what we call the Main Street parking lot. In consultation with Mr. Bachman, with Mr. Mooreing, we decided that it made a lot of sense to do, if, if we knew we were going to redo the Main Street parking lot, we had, already had funds for the North Common, it really made sense to treat this entire area as one and design the improvements both for parking, for pedestrian ADA, plazas, lighting, erosion control, all of that as one. So at this, at this time, our plan is to utilize, Mr. Bachman may help me out here, but transportation fund money as well as the CPAC allocation of $540,000. We are currently negotiating with Weston and Sampson on this project, and we hope to have them under contract very soon. This will be a project that is overseen, if you will, the public forums by the LSSE Commission, the Historical Commission, with staff support, of course, from the various departments. Of course, DPW, Mr. Mooreing and his engineering team will be right there every step of the way. We're planning public meetings on this in late February. I don't have exact dates yet, but I will have those soon. We will also be creating a webpage, its own webpage for this project, so that the public can keep up on it as we move forward. You may recall, as we were assembling the money for the North Common, we had a number of public meetings. So we feel as though we're not really starting back at zero here. This conceptual design was done by DPW engineering staff, and we feel as though we're going to build on that concept design. But we really don't want to go back to square one on this. We've spent a considerable amount of time and energy, gotten a lot of public comment, so we can build on that. So that's the North Common. Our goal would be under, to be under construction ideally early this summer. And that is a, that is a optimistic and aggressive goal. Moving forward, more excitement down south, the Groff Park Spray Park and the Groff Spray Park and Playground. Again, the select board is very familiar with this project. We, again, were successful at gaining the confidence of the CPAC and town meeting to assemble a funding package. Just to orient folks at home, this is the parking lot at Groff Park, the existing comfort station. And in this area, this is the area where there was an old playground and the old waiting pool, which has now been removed. The goal here would be to create a spray park feature, a significant spray park feature, and a playground and a pavilion, both at the upper level, and although it doesn't show it in this figure, a new pavilion on the lower level, which is down at the Fort River. And these are just some concept designs and ideas that we are bringing to the table. This is a project that is going to be designed by Berkshire Design. As it turns out, they have extensive experience in, in spray park and playground development. Again, we are planning public meetings, both in town, but also down in South Amherst in February and March. Our goal is to be meeting with folks. We'll probably have one at Crocker Farm. We hope to have one at one of the, one or more of the apartment complexes off of East Hadley Road. As you know, also, we've asked through the CDBG process for funding to do a multipurpose path on East Hadley Road. We have half of that package assembled, and we've put forth the remaining funding request that'll go to the state in the coming weeks. So the idea is to really reach out to many of the residents, neighbors, people who are within walking, biking distance of Crocker Farm, Crocker Farm parents, et cetera, to gain insight as to what they would like to see at that park. Now, LSSE has done some of that already, but we're going to redouble our efforts to gather more, more input. This project will be overseen by the LSSE Commission, of course, but with input from appropriate staff, from planning, from DPW and from LSSE. Again, we will have a unique webpage up with this project in the coming days so that people can follow the progress of the, of the project. Our hope here, and this is another aggressive timeline, but we're pretty confident in this one, our hope is to have this under construction late August or at least by September 1st. The goal is to be able to use Groff Park the entire summer, and then we would have to fence, of course, the construction area. But there would be construction equipment and, and some modest disruption of, of use there. But if we can get the entire spring and summer, that we, that would be our goal. So Groff Park. And then finally, this is an image that we used at a recent solar forum that we had in this room. Some of the select board was there. We had about 40 people attend. I thought it was a very productive discussion. We had brief presentations that I did one, Ms. Chicorello did one, and Mr. Mooreing. Mr. Bachman was there to answer questions as well. We feel as though we have a strong and, and growing partnership with Lee Energy Group, our partner on this. For those folks at home who have not participated in this forum, this is a picture of the north landfill with the transfer station, which is right off of Belcher Town Road. And this is simply a conceptual design showing, this crosshatching represents a concept of where panels for solar would go. This is about, about a four megawatt array, and again, that is currently under development and design. Mr. Mooreing, Ms. Chicorello have been meeting with our, our partners at Lee Energy to talk about how this would, would move forward. There's a number of permitting pathways that need to be completed by Lee Energy, and the town will support Lee Energy as they move forward. As I alluded to earlier, this north landfill is all habitat for a very rare species of bird called the grassland sparrow, the grass upper sparrow. And in order to develop solar here, we need to put land from the south landfill in what's called a conservation restriction. So we'll be working with DEP and the folks at Natural Heritage Program in Boston on how to do that. We've had a number of conversations with them, and so we have a framework for how that will, how that will happen. So we're quite confident in moving forward with that strategy. Again, this project already has a web presence, but we'll be beefing up that web presence off of the town website in the coming days. The permitting pathways, there'll be many opportunities for the public to get involved. There'll be conservation commission permits. There'll be DEP process, natural heritage process, MEPA process, and then finally, there'll be a local ZBA permit that will need to be achieved by the applicant. So there'll be plenty of time for the public to hear more about that. And then maybe I'll stop there. I know Mr. Bachman wanted to have one slide up about Sweetser Park, and I'm not sure if he wanted to update the board briefly on that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as you may have seen in the paper, Senator Rosenberg has put a funding request in for a bond authorization bill at the State House, and one of the goals would be to, for a, his request would be to put in $100,000 for making improvements to Sweetser Park. We already know that, what you will hear in a couple of weeks when we talk about our paving plan, that Main Street is scheduled to be repaved. The sidewalk from along Sweetser Park and as far up towards Emily Dickinson House as we can do, as we can achieve, it's a, it's a design challenge, is, is in very bad repair and needs to be addressed. And whether we get this grant or not, that is a top priority, one of the top priorities for the town. But we appreciate the efforts of the senator, and if that money comes through, there are enormous needs throughout the town that we need to address, and this is one of them. So we utilize his, the funds from the state to take, take on this project.
If I could, could just add on this, we do have some money set aside through CPAC to assess the condition and possible repairs for the fountain in Sweetser Park, which is a historic feature of the park. It is a unique, I don't have all the details myself, but I know that Mr. Tucker, before he retired, schooled me extensively on, on the need to look very, very closely at that, that beautiful historic fountain. So we do have funds set aside for that. We plan to contract with an expert to come in and assess both the condition, the, and the inner workings of that fountain to see how we can repair that as part of our capital needs in the future.
Ms. Brewer.
Well, that's very exciting to see possibilities for Sweetser. I'm just looking at this and wanted to underscore that we have the Clark House and then Anne Whalen right in this area, which are two senior housing developments in town. And whatever we do to have an eye towards the sort of age-friendly community that Mr. Bachman has talked to us about before and maybe make sure that those people also have a voice, because in a way, this is their front yard or their backyard, if you will. I mean, this is a highly used area. Families play here. I'd like to see, you know, a play area more, more developed. But I think anything we do around the sidewalks on either side of Sweetser and benches, whatever, that make it even more accessible and friendly for the seniors who, this is their yard.
Are there any questions? I know I went through those quickly, but other, and you've heard some of that before, but are there any questions on any of the other projects that I might answer for you tonight?
Ms. Brewer.
It's, it's not a question. It's more part of a future presentation. So when you're talking more about Groff Park, although the neighbors who use it right now are pretty well aware of how old that equipment is, just in terms of context of there is the upper and lower playground. Of course, I mean, I know you all know all this. I'm talking about the general public. So the upper and lower playgrounds, obviously, the lower playground is substantially older than the upper playground. And when you referred to the upper playground as old, I was like, well, let me think. Okay, I worked on Mill River's most recent playground. Oh, wow, almost 20 years ago. So yeah, it is older because that was done before Mill River's current iteration, which is showing its age and needing some refreshing. But I think it's important for people to recognize that because people don't, particularly people who don't have young kids playing right now, they just remember, you know, the old stuff at Mill River that you remember from when you were a child and your family's involvement there. And then the lower part of Groff Park, where many of that, much of that equipment just stayed the same for generations of children and that.
Good enough for us.
It was good enough for us. Burn your hands on that slide. It's okay. It's not that hot. It's not that high. It'll be fine. And just to show that, you know, just like splash parks are not something we experienced as children, that they have become the way to go, associated with water features and safety and supervision. That playground equipment has also changed a lot over the years, and so even though it doesn't feel like it's that old, it does need refreshing, much more memorial, again, being newer, but not new by any stretch of the imagination. Because I think it's sometimes hard for people who don't have kids who play there right now to realize it's just not what we would want it to be for the community values that we hold. It's not that we're trying to build the most amazing play structure ever, but we need safe and fun and developmentally appropriate equipment for kids, and that just takes ongoing refreshing. And so thank you for including that as part of, you know, we're just doing the splash parks, that we're realizing that the whole thing. And having two pavilions will be an interesting addition to the space that has always been available there, in terms of the lower, because it's such a popular place to have, to use of the pavilion in the lower section, just so that have an additional pavilion sounds fantastic. So people will like that.
So one subtle but important point about Groff that a lot of people don't realize, and it factors into where our focus is, is that on the lower level, we get into many more resource areas, because we're very close to the Fort River, which is a very special river with regard to the unique species that occur there. So we are going to redo the pavilion on the lower level in pretty much the exact same footprint than it is, and that's a way that we can work with the Conservation Commission, and they will be very appreciative of us not, you know, increasing impervious surface, et cetera, there. But on the upper level, our goal, and we can't do all things for all people up there, but our goal is to do a playground and a spray park that has features that are appropriate for children of different ages. So the goal is to design it. That's why it's really, we need an expert to do that. Because if we, we can all pick out of catalogs, but Dave Zomek doesn't know what the best features are for three-to-five-year-olds, and then from six-to-nine-year-olds. And so this is why Berkshire Design, and they bring in people from the companies that make these, and then they come up with the right mix of features. I do note, yes, we do have very, very old play structures on the lower level of Groff, and that's something we're going to have to really look at. Do we need them? Do we want them? Are they still safe? Many people have said, oh, don't touch them, we kind of like them. But definitely on the upper level, closest to the restrooms, that all needs to be redone, and that's our goal.
So the other thing I would just add regarding play structures is, you know, one of the things that's becoming more to the forefront in design of those play structures is accessibility, so that kids of all different kinds and levels of accessibility, whether it be age-based or just physical-based, you know, is factored in as you do that. There are some playgrounds in the area that have that in their design, and people will drive aways to go to a park that has those kinds of facilities.
We absolutely must have that as a key criteria in our design. We have recent experience with that, because, of course, the planning staff worked very closely with the folks at Crocker Farm to design that wonderful CPA-funded, primarily CPA-funded, new play structure at the Crocker Farm preschool and kindergarten.
Just a couple of things, and it's just our first bite at the apple, because I know we'll see more as it's evolving, but when you think about how you're going to use the upper and the lower play areas, it's also challenging when one is supervising young children, and the four-year-old dashes to the lower, and the two-year-old is at the upper, so it may be differentiating or thinking about, because I think some of the parks I've gone to, some really super-duper ones, fall short where they don't make space for the people who are actually supervising the children, and that's shade. Not, you know, we need shade, being out there in July when there's no school, and you're, you know, you're the grandparent, and you're managing, and it's just brutally hot for everybody. So enough shade and enough seating in areas so that you're appropriately watching, but giving independence, and then that thing of, like, one runs that way, goes that way. So there's a lot to think about, and of course, the accessibility, I'm sure, will be integrated.
And just to be clear, we're really, other than the pavilion, we're not really doing anything on the lower level in this phase. It's going to all be on the upper level, absolutely shade, ADA, seating, multipurpose pavilion, how can it be used, you know, nine months a year, et cetera. So, and we're going to tie in the Comfort Station as well.
Ms. Brewer.
You can tell what things we find exciting. Playground equipment, I loved, I didn't just pick it out of a catalog last time, Mr. Zomek, but I want to talk about accessibility again. I want to emphasize a little bit more what Mr. Slaughter said. Back when we designed Mill River almost 20 years ago, we looked at places that were, we went on many field trips, and we looked at places that were specifically designed to be really accessible, as opposed to ADA-required accessible. We made Mill River ADA-required accessible. We did not make it the kind of magnet that there's a name of a child's playground, so that's like a whole series of playgrounds, that really fully integrates kids with different abilities, and that science has changed a lot in the last 20 years. But then, we chose not to do that. We just did what we had to do. And I encourage us to look and see if there's a way that we can do at least a portion of it in the more forward-thinking ways, with the more, even more recent ways of looking at accessibility, because we know that in Amherst, we have a number of people who come here specifically because of our school programs that are available to us. And so to go beyond what's required, because, of course, we're going to do what's required. We have the little ramp, we have the engineered wood fiber, blah, blah, blah. But if we can look at it really carefully, I'm sure Berkshire Design or whoever can help us with that, but to consider it as more than just what's required, but perhaps looking at being a little closer to the cutting edge, because we did make that decision not to do that 20 years ago, and it is a draw.
I was going to say cutting edge, but then I thought, that'd be good for playground.
Yes. No cutting edges.
I really appreciate the emphasis on the accessibility, and I will bring that forth to and through Berkshire Design. I will say that Mr. Bachman and I, with Mr. Mooreing, Ms. Bills, have had fairly recent conversations about, you know, as we, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves here, but as we launch improvements to Groff, we have a master plan going for community field. We want to make sure that in time, we come back around to Mill River, because we do know that that playground, there are, you know, there are cycles, and that cycle was 15, 20 years ago. We have not gotten a park grant from the state in quite a while. You may recall that we applied for multiple park grants for North Common, and for a variety of reasons, the state didn't love that proposal. So our hope is to circle back around, and the goal being having an updated, current, ADA, accessible, exciting park, north, central, and south Amherst. And, you know, that's our goal over the next five years. So thank you.
So I have a couple of questions, not related to playgrounds, but so with the North Common, if memory serves, the sidewalk on the north side of the Main Street parking lot is going to hold the bike-share rack, which, given that we've gone with the Bellwegen or whatever that group is, that the motorized will require power. So I presume as we redo the surface of that lot, and we will need to, you know, run conduit to that space, I presume is the case. The other thing I would suggest is just a thing to keep in mind, not that it has to happen anytime soon, that PBTA has the ability to take basically a panel out of the bus shelter and turn it into a electric signage. And so if there's, you know, sort of standard power available to them, they can do that. They can also put solar on the roof if necessary. It's a fairly heavily-used bus stop, there are others that are used more, but just may not be something, but if we're going to sort of tear up the sidewalk to do the parking lot, and we're going to run power in that neighborhood, it might be worthwhile to run the conduit, whether it happens soon or not. But just to put that in your mind is something to keep in mind. But the one question about that, though, is, is that sidewalk on Main Street actually going to end up any wider? I know that the lot itself is a little bigger than is sort of strictly necessary for parking as it's currently designed, so there's more space between cars than is absolutely necessary to sort of back in, turn around. So are they, is there some thought of widening that sidewalk, make more of a little plaza up on the corner near the lights, or not? Or can you...
There have been discussions about that, but it's a little bit early right now, because we're just getting our designer on board. But certainly, that's come through, as we've talked about that island that includes where the bike-share will go and where the current bus stop is, that we all recognize that that is a very, it's a hodgepodge of generations of bituminous pavement and concrete and whatnot. So we definitely want that to be a more welcoming space, a more accessible space. We do have some room to move out in the right-of-way, and we also have a little room. So it's something that Mr. Mooreing and his staff will weigh in with our designers on. I don't want to get, I don't know the specifics, but it's certainly been talked about. So it's on our radar screen.
So the other thing I want to ask about is on the solar landfill. You talked about it being a four-megawatt, and again, this may be premature. At some of the meetings way back when, you know, there was some discussion about whether it would all be, would all the power be essentially sort of credited to the town, or would, you know, some communities will build one of those, and homeowners can buy essentially a certain section of power from it. So for example, my house is not a great, even though it's immediately adjacent to that property, is not a great, doesn't have a great solar resource, by virtue of the way the house sits and that sort of thing. But if there was a publicly available, you know, ability to buy my section to give myself credit for having solar, even though it's not physically there, there are those kind of things. Has that been part of the discussion at all, or is it mostly all going to be an agreement between Lee and the town only?
We haven't got there. Community solar is something that's becoming more and more popular. The biggest challenge oftentimes for a solar developer is having someone willing to take, off-take the power, and they like to have one customer, i.e. the town, to say, we will buy everything. There are a lot of solar developers out there who are marketing their power to different people, and they look at the big customers. And I think the easiest path to success is to have one entity buy it, but doing a community solar option is certainly not out of the realm of reason.
Do we know what our general year-over-year sort of total use is?
I think this was a quarter of the use. So we're not surplusing.
No.
That's what I'm thinking, like, we could use all of it, and then a little bit plays into some.
We've been approached by three different entities saying, buy our solar, from different places in Western Massachusetts. And we're sort of holding out, because we want to be, we want this project to go.
Right.
And we want them not to have the ability, the fact that they haven't sold their solar to stop this project from moving forward.
Right.
So we want to be their customer.
Right. Right. Other questions, comments?
I just want to note, you know, there's a lot of, there are a lot of projects in play right now, and Mr. Zomek is sort of really leading the charge on most of them, and it's very ambitious, and we've set some very ambitious timeframes, especially for the North Common. That one is probably going to be a hard one to, once people start to get their teeth into it and start to understand it and start asking questions, I think, we think the public process is going to be more involved. But we have our goal, and we're going to try and work towards that. But I just, you know, credit him, the department, the various departments in the town for taking on all these projects, and we're going to be very busy over the next year.
Right. Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Slaughter, can we have a five-minute break?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So we'll take a little recess.
Again, this is a quick look. I'll be back. We'll do updates. We'll keep the board very informed. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. We'll take a little recess, so people can stretch their legs and get a drink of water or whatever, and then we'll be back in a moment. The physical, separate from what you want to put on it, just the physical location of the North Common is complex, because there's so much hill there.
...
know if our resident experts wanted to offer some initial comment or thoughts about how they think about this, or what their thoughts or ideas are, what they've heard from other communities, because you guys have been sort of...
Let me blurt it out, and then you'll smooth it over. Okay, that sounds like a good plan.
Because, I mean, you've interacted with a lot of other communities who, you know, grappled with some of these sort of, you know, points of conflict. It's a very different, you know, to my mind, let me just frame it this way, is that I think that, are we, you know, medical marijuana is a very different thing than the adult use. And I certainly think of them as very different things, and so I think that my approach to a letter of support and non-opposition is, we're not required to for the other, but for this, there's certain things I want to kind of press them about relative to the medical aspects of this. And so, that's, that's kind of where I've been sort of thinking about this a little bit, but I'm curious as to what other communities' experiences.
Well, we'll be blurted out. When you see medical, just think adult use, because essentially with the new statute, the new legislation, there's no prohibition to the conversion.
Right.
So, we may still be at the tail end of the medical licensing phase, and there are legitimate medical components that still may happen, and they'll be separated in a different tax structure, and there's different reasons. But, when you see a request for medical, or when I see a request for medical, I'm seeing adult use. So, you can smooth that one out.
No, it's only going to get worse from here. So, so one of the things I asked the town manager just to check in with KP Law and make sure I hadn't missed something in all the pieces of paper we saw at MMA and all the other articles we read by the reams every week about marijuana of various sorts and affiliations from week to week. And, one, we can't rescind, some communities talked about rescinding their letters of non-opposition and support, even if we wanted to, which I'm not saying we wanted to, but just in terms of knowing our options, we actually can't do that because they already got their provisional certificates of registration. So, that's a non-starter anymore. One of the things that's so interesting, of course, though, is that we have to provide, in order for them to get that provisional certificate, a letter of support or non-opposition. However, as things currently stand with, let's just say, non-medical marijuana, we don't have to provide anything, except they just say, "Ah, it meets the zoning good enough for us," which is one of the things we've been working on at all the hearings, because it makes no sense to me, based on the conversations we've had over the years here, that we, who clearly are community-supported medical marijuana, we forthrightly and quickly did zoning in 2013 to make it happen. We gave all these people letters, and none of them opened. And I'm really mad, jealous even, that East Hampton is saying, "Our community was so forward-thinking in allowing medical marijuana." It's like, so were we! We can't help it. They didn't open, and so we did all the things we needed to do. And so, I'm feeling frustrated that we went through this when we didn't have any idea, when we, when we did those original letters of support and non-opposition, that there was going to be a provision that allowed them to automatically transition into non-medical use. And yet, we asked them all these hard questions about, "Who are you really? Are you really a nonprofit? Are you really medical? Are you just, you know, saying this, or do you seem to have professional staff associated with this?" I mean, we were really trying to do our due diligence, and now it doesn't really seem to matter, because they're all going to be allowed to flip to non-medical use, and without us giving that letter of support or non-opposition. The only saving grace is that they will have to have signed host-community agreements at some point in the process, which they did not have to have technically. It was a little unclear with just the medical, and we only got to that point with one of the organizations. But, those will be a necessary component of everything that happens after July 1st under the new regulations. So, in terms of how, well, the reason I want to talk about this is one, I wanted to, I guess, vent about that, and I'm really unhappy that we don't already have medical. And one of the reasons I wanted to have medical was because I wanted to have medical, because our community made it very clear that's one of our values, and we wanted to offer people pain relief in our community, and we're really disappointed it hasn't opened, even though we've given out four letters. Two is that we're really, I'm really disappointed that we haven't done it, because then we haven't seen any of the ramifications. And so, people being worried about things that have or have not come to fruition, because none of them have opened, although one of them is making substantial progress. So, we still don't have much to go on beyond theoretical stuff at this point. I believe Mr. Bachman can speak to what Town Council did say in terms of if someone comes forward to us, as we've heard maybe happening with one of the organizations that's already received a letter but is potentially looking at new ownership, that there's a suggestion from Town Council as to how we might handle that, rather than that idea of like rescinding or withdrawing a letter per se, so that those, that there would be clear transfer of one to the other as opposed to there being five instead of four, because one of the reasons we chose that number eight, which was not highly scientific but was based to a degree on, we assumed that at some point these four would move forward. Because, again, even though July 1st regulations, I have no doubt, will be in place, given how fast the Cannabis Control Commission is moving, that doesn't mean anybody's going to open. And so, some of these may just wander off and decide to open someplace else or put their interests elsewhere, and others may open as both medical and recreation, non-medical, or they may just, oh, they may just transfer completely to the other. I mean, we just don't know at this point. So, that's why I'm having a hard time understanding if at this point our attitude needs to be kind of whatever, because there's like really not much more to say about medical at this point, or are we trying to get at some other types of information that we hear from people before we issue another letter? Because, to some extent, we've learned stuff over time. We've learned that in hindsight, it might have been smart to issue an RFP rather than just accepting whoever showed up in whatever order they showed up in, but that's what we did. Too late now. So, is there any point in belaboring this more than I already just have, and we're just saying, "Sure, that, that sounds good," to whoever comes in, knowing that they're going to be under whatever regulations come into play July 1st? Or do we have something concrete we can really ask them that we feel will make a difference to our community beyond what Town Council suggests in terms of making clear that we've got four, not five?
The thing I think about is that, and this is to some extent, you know, building off what Ms. Kruger said, is that I think at this point, the intention of getting this is to get a leg up on the competition to go into non-medical use. And so, I think that changes my lens relative to whether we want to do that or not. In other words, we have four that currently have that leg up, which is half of the eight that we've decided as a town to allow. Do we want to tip the scales more or less? And the thing is, is the process to go through the medical is fairly extensive, you know, it's a fairly extensive and expensive process. And so, we talked, you know, some of the conversation when we were talking about zoning is, do we create a level playing field for all people who want to, you know, that, so more people can access this business opportunity. And so, I have some real reservations about issuing any more, just from the standpoint of, I think, we've given half the eight kind of a head start on everybody else. At the same time, I'm not sure it makes that big a difference, given the amount of time between now and July 1. But, anyway.
So, my question is, how far can we go in talking about how many legs we want up, when, you know, I don't want to wander into the specifics of a request, because it's not on our agenda, but I think I'm feeling similarly to what I think you said. I would be just as happy to have three strictly medical coming along, and then evaluate what the other, up to, you know, five more looked like under the new rules of the game, which we, you know, probably know about 90% of what it's going to look like and not the rest. I don't, I don't see any... I think we got ahead of ourselves, you know, in some ways in trying to have an open humanitarian view, and then the rules of the game changed. And I'm looking at the map with the three locations, and I, I have different ideas about whether that's good or bad, just like from a planning perspective of density and location. And I go back and forth about, it's good that they're all together, it's not good. Gee, this corner lot has all kinds of redevelopment potential that, you know, isn't, you know, wasn't realized in the application that we already had, maybe it would, and some other. So, you know, does how I feel about how I want to see this corner lot redeveloped have anything to do with whether that should be adult-use marijuana by itself standalone? So, I, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Mr. Wall?
That can be brief, thanks. I think you've already stated the issues, all the three of you, very nicely, you know, that the problems with the process that got us to this point, and the fact I don't feel any particular urgency in granting yet another one under uncertain circumstances. So, I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Steinberg, anything else?
Yeah, I'm not sure that I have much I could say that would contribute to anything that we could do tonight. It's questions that would come along if we did receive another request that we were acting upon, is whether, if we have reached the eight point by the, for adult-use marijuana sales facilities, and then get another one that comes in for medical, whether medical, that medical marijuana has any rights attached to it to expand beyond just medical. And that's a hypothetical question that I'd care about under those circumstances, but doesn't need answer now. And the other thing that I wonder about, however, is it's my understanding, and this is maybe just educational question, not entirely related, it's my understanding that with the medical marijuana establishments, that they're required to grow within Massachusetts under, in facilities that are also licensed by the Department of Public Health. Are there any similar restrictions for other adult-use marijuana production?
Well, the grow facilities are all under regulations, and I believe some of the DPH stuff is going to switch over to the CCC.
Right. I mean, well, it would have to be in Massachusetts, because they can't transport across state lines, and, but it's not required to be vertically integrated. So, that's one of the things that, for example, GTI, which you read about in the newspaper, I'm not speaking out of school here, GTI is the furthest along. They're up on Meadow Street, and they're building a facility in Holyoke to grow. And so, they have to grow it themselves under some part of GTI in order to sell it here or at any other dispensary medical-wise.
Medical.
Once it becomes available to the world of Massachusetts on July 1, then recreational places will be able, like a different recreational place or non-medical place would be able to buy from GTI if GTI wanted to sell to them, as opposed to it having to all be vertically integrated within the same company. So, there will be a lot more choices, although, again, you know, you have to start planting stuff in order to sell it, and that hasn't happened a lot of places yet. That's still, I mean, we're still under 20 in terms of active medical dispensaries in the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which I think is a lot slower than a lot of people expected, given the county restrictions that got lifted years ago. So, that's part of it. In terms of the eight, you bring up an excellent point that we've been discussing in the, that we talked about associated with the eight, but also that we've been trying to clarify in our internal working group, which is that we want to make sure in terms of, like, retailers versus establishments, like, what counts as that eight? And we have never counted, and we would not intend to count, and we want to make sure our definitions don't count every medical, non-medical site as two. They would only count as four. So, if every one of the four that is currently licensed to do medical also did non-medical, it would still only count as four. It would not count as eight, is my understanding, because otherwise, then eight wouldn't have been enough, because they might have all done that. And that wouldn't have solved our, all the other issues of why we said we wanted a larger number than the number that currently exists. But, you are exactly right, that that's one of the definitions that the zoning subcommittee is looking at bringing to town meeting, annual town meeting, to make sure it's clear, because Mr. Moore also realized that, after the fact that he wanted to have the differentiation between retailers, establishments, whatever that means, to be totally clear on that. So, in theory, if all of these places, if we hadn't heard anything about anybody considering doing anything else, all these places could establish a separate non-medical arm, and it would still only count as four, because it would still be on the same site. Now, if they said, "We want to have another location, and that's the one that's going to be the non-medical, and we're only going to do medical at this site," then that would count. Then, there's still that definition question we have to be clear on to make sure, does that count as five, or does that count as numerous outlets of one place? And so, we want to make sure that what we thought was eight, at least we all agree on what eight means in terms of how that counts.
While marijuana's on the floor, I might just give you a little update. We've been struggling, and it's come up at a couple of hearings and workshops we've been to, the cafe or social consumption aspect, and not being opposed or non-opposed, it's unclear how it would work for a bunch of reasons. It's complicated, and also juggling that with no smoking laws and workplace, smoke-free workplace stuff. And you might have heard that the governor actually weighed in and asked the Cannabis Control Commission to delay that part of the regulations, because, again, not opposed or non-opposed, it's just way more complicated. But, be thinking, once that gets worked out, we might have the eight licensees, plus we could have other locations for social consumption. I don't know if that would, how that fits with the eight or not. So, a whole other layer that, I mean, I, I think weighting probably makes sense, just because we, it's complicated, and we have a lot of unanswered questions. And the rollout of this is a lot as it is, the adult-use part.
Right. And just to make that a little more specifically complicated, is that East Hampton is already, has somebody who's already planning to open a social consumption place. Their zoning allows for it, but again, how's smoking going to work? Because you're not supposed to be able to smoke. And so, then, there's a place in Worcester that's opened, that's a private club, where you can smoke anything you want, according to their website, and not clear how that works, because Cannabis Control Commission has said that, "That's not ours. We didn't write any regs for that. Mm-mm. You got, you got a problem with your smoking regulations." Then, at that point, that's not our problem. But, then it's the matter of, you know, we're trying to be proactive so that we don't have a place open, and then we have to fight with them about whether or not they're doing what's entirely appropriate. And so, we're in the spirit of the law versus a lawsuit. So, one of the things we tried to get across, certainly when the hearing I was at, is I said, "We know people are going to get sued. We'd just rather not get sued first." So, could you please help us with some more details, so we don't get sued first, as to how this works?
Because they're going to remember you.
I hope so.
You want to be the president, Senator?
Exactly. Because we want to try and do things that support what our community values, but we also wanted to do it with eyes wide open as to what we're allowing and not what we're, and what we're not allowing. And like you say, social consumption would not count, to the best of any of our assumptions, as eight. But, again, when we came up with that number eight, we weren't really planning that social consumption was going to be a thing right off the bat. So...
Because we didn't have the draft regs.
We're continually, I said, the other thing I said is, "We're predicting the future as fast as we can." It's been a little tricky as, as to how to do that, because we don't know what they're actually going to, and, and they have, the Cannabis Control Commission's been getting immense pressure from all the, quote, "Sticks in the mud," about not doing social consumption right out of the gate. But, so, they're hearing some positives and some negatives at the hearings, because we attended two different hearings, and so we know they heard both associated with that, because one of the issues is it's being treated as a social justice issue, that that could potentially be a place where people who have, in the past, don't have the big money to buy into creating a storefront, but social consumption is a different level of investment.
Right.
You don't have to have X number of dollars to back you up to get a certain kind of license. So, everything's more complicated. So, everything's more complicated than it seems. So the reason I want to talk about this tonight was to see if there was anything we needed to think about in terms of if we do have someone come forward to us from one of these four groups, or even just a completely different group, and say, if they want something, it's like, how do we say, how do we decide? How, I mean, I'm not saying we're deciding on the merits of their, because we don't have it. But what I'm saying is, what questions will we even ask, knowing what we know now versus what we knew then? I don't know, I mean, we can ask just random questions, but that doesn't help us, like, necessarily decide what that means. I mean, is there some form, we talked about criteria earlier tonight, associated with different kinds of things? Criteria to help us decide if property surplus, criteria to help us decide various things? How do we even frame the conversation?
Well, I certainly think, for me anyway, I think at a minimum, because it is a letter relative to medical marijuana, that they should have the sort of, whether they fully intend to go rec, you know, non-medical use or not, they should have their, you know, proverbial ducks in a row relative to medical. Because if, you know, it's disingenuous at a minimum to come in and say that they want to do medical, but not have, you know, the, the sort of pieces in place. It's like, what's your, you know, medical plan? Do you have a medical director? Do you have, you know, I mean, we saw some relatively sophisticated plans from, from our previous requesters, relative to, you know, delivering marijuana in a medical environment in a, in a serious way. And so, I'm, I'm definitely going to hold them to that, if, if that comes before us, because I think if you want a letter of non-opposition or support relative to a medical facility, you've got to be a medical facility. So I'm going to do that personally, anyway. I think, you know, at this point, given that we know what we know about non-medical use, then I think we're going to ask those questions too, about, do you have plans to transition or additionally open recreational? Because I think that starts to change how you think about the location a little bit. But, still evolving on what I'm thinking about these things. Mr. Steinberg?
Very difficult, because I'm not even convinced that any of these places that have gotten to the point that they're at in the process, Level III or whatever it's called, provisional licensing, actually have to open as medical facilities in order to get their adult use license. And so, you know, all of the presentation, all of the good questions we asked, in hindsight, what do they mean? Could we ask for a more intricate business plan than we did? Possibly, but, and would we think about that in the future? Those are the kinds of things that we might think about. If a criteria that we have is that we want no more than four of the eight to be also medical, in order to bring a variety, a larger variety of providers into the community, then that's a principle that we ought to test to see whether we can, in fact, implement it, and then that should be the discussion.
I agree with the two preceding comments. I think Mr. Slott makes a good point. I mean, we don't know what's going to happen, and we obviously, well, maybe we do and know what's going to happen, but I think for the very, for the sake of consistency alone, it's, it's proper to ask for all the information we did for the rest. I mean, otherwise, we're not doing our due diligence, I think. And again, we did, as you said, we did have very detailed plans about the medical expertise, the delivery, the security, we got down to building plans, and, and that's the least we can do. And then, as Mr. Steinberg said, to inquire into further prospects and to keep that number four in mind.
I've just been thinking, I mean, usually, we're kind of at the front end of a process, and then we say, "Well, you know, it's going to go to the ZBA or the Planning Board, or both. They're going to look at plans and what it looks like, and maybe Design Review Board." It, it might be that before we give anything, we want to really know what particular site is going to look like, how it's going to benefit the community, you know, if it is that corner site, for example, how does, how does that work? Is that the best, you know, way to use that site? I mean, we, we can actually use our position to maybe be, be a lot more proactive about what we're going to get. Just a thought.
Just, again, talking about process, not any particular cases, as you recall, when we did have that conversation, we were, we made sure to raise the issues of past ownership and uses versus the potential future ownership and use without, you know, without saying we wanted to pick winners and losers or decide what business should go where. That was part of the conversation, at least as a general consideration, so I think we're entirely within our rights to, to keep doing that.
Maybe I don't know whether to say another thing or not. You know, it gets into, you get into some strange places if you want to, you know, so for example, some of what they talked about was how they would interact with police, our, Police Department to provide, you know, security footage and the interaction with, you know, care and control of product and, you know, all of that sort of stuff. And so, there was a certain public outreach component that they had, some of them had, if I remember correctly, about how they were going to, you know, essentially interact within the community. You know, it's like, to what extent can we ask those questions? Or, and perhaps that's more appropriate for a host community agreement about, you know, compelling them to do certain kinds of things within our community. Because we have a lot, you know, we've talked about this too, is that, you know, we have a large number of relatively vulnerable, you know, people, as far as, you know, that aren't quite of age, or even are of age, but may not be well-suited to make great decisions, because, you know, they're still, you know, young. And we, you know, we've talked about, you know, having a certain responsibility to, to those members of our community in that regard, and not to overly parent them, but at the same time to, to create circumstances where they, you know, make the best choices they can, I guess, in some respects. I don't know how much of that kind of series of questions we could impose or ask about. And again, it may be a part and parcel of like a host community agreement structure that we, you know, sort of press them on certain, you know, sort of community building and community outreach kind of things. You know, much the same way when, you know, if you look at every lottery ticket, there's a thing about getting gambling help. You know, there's sort of certain hooks on, on some of these kinds of things. So I don't know, you know, maybe, again, perhaps, you know, a, a host community agreement kind of captures that, or has the ability to capture some of that sort of stuff. But, anyway, yes.
So, there are a couple hypotheticals. Suppose a new company comes in and says, "We want to open a new place." So the question is, is that something the board would like to entertain? Or suppose a company comes in and says, "We want to transfer our license to company A, company B. Is that something you want to entertain as a board? Or are you saying, 'We're going to wait until July 1 to see what comes out, because we're, it's, it's, we're not ready to talk about this anymore.'" There's no, I don't think there's anything that compels you to talk to people if they come in, but if you get that request hypothetically, what should our response be on your behalf?
Mr. Kruger?
Thank you, I really appreciate that question. And so, back to the host community for just a moment. The host community agreement is negotiated by the town manager, and although, of course, he is going to listen to us in all our infinite wisdom, when he debates that, it isn't like it gets debated here, or that it gets debated in executive session, or anything like that. It's just like, once it's at that point, it's, it's off our plate. So we know he'll represent us well and get us a really good deal. But that's, there's only so much we can influence for that. I appreciate you saying that nothing compels us to do this, because, you know, we're always trying to think of, you know, on the one hand, Amherst is open for business, and then another hand, you know, we support medical happening, absolutely, and we even support non-medical, we're just a little concerned about how the details are going to play out, but we support both. And with all the things that we always talk about, although I said the last time, I'm not going to tell you again all the statistics about how young our population is, but that's huge for us, absolutely. I think the other thing that, you know, becomes problematic is, as we, as we talked about, associated with our release from 61A earlier, and I, when I quite harshly said, "Well, you know, your closing deadline is not our problem." But the reality is, it's not. And so, on the one hand, we want to do the right thing for people, absolutely, and I'm really glad that that's going to work out for them. But it's not our problem. And so, there is no medical place, given the current situation of the four that exist, that can actually start offering product as a medical establishment prior to July 1. I would be really shocked if GTI has anything available based on their growing. And so, literally, no one's going to be selling anyway, as of July 1. So then, maybe that, to some extent, changes the conversation too, than if this was happening a year ago. If a year ago, sort of right after the regs came out, when we didn't know what the timelines were for sure, and there was theoretical possibility, but at this point, there's no longer a theoretical possibility that any of these medical places are going to open in time, as far as I can tell, based on where they are and their plan and their own vertical integration, because of the fact they have to grow their own. So, I feel less worried that somehow, economic development-wise, we're saying, we're putting, we don't want to feel like we're being unfair, or that we're putting on the brakes on anyone from that standpoint. And I don't, that's what I'm saying, is I don't think we are. But I would also be interested to hear what the rest of the board thinks, if we would want to hear, and as Mr. Bachmann indicated, do we want to even hear from anybody associated with these things? But make it clear that if we do want to hear from them, that it's not necessarily a slam dunk. We, we don't want to mislead anyone, but are we willing to hear from them at all? Or is there a point to hearing from them at all, given how we feel about this? So that he knows the answer to that question. Because if somebody asks you theoretically today, since we haven't really sorted this out, should they bother coming before us, or should they not? And if they do, do we just say, "Sure, you can try." We don't know where we're going with it, we don't have like this nice little checklist that you can see if you meet that, and therefore you will say yes.
I'm inclined to let people come in and talk to us, and it doesn't, in being clear that that doesn't mean, because they're on the agenda, that, you know, any, we know what action we might take, then just, you know, looking at a lot of different alternatives. But I think to not even allow somebody to come in and talk to us does say, like, we're not open for business in a certain way, and I think it also makes Mr. Kravitz's job very awkward, where he's trying to, I was going to say cultivate relationships.
No, you did not.
But I think he's, you know, I, and then we have the conversation, where he's, you know, maybe, maybe the conversation is, "Yes, but..." And I hear your thing about the timeline, and no one is going to be able to meet that, but in general, for the industry, as people come in and have something we're interested in, and it's part of the eight, they have certain, you know, business benchmarks they need to make, or they're going to walk away. So maybe it's somebody who want to say, "Yeah, hey, great, come back in July," or, "This is where we're stuck," or, "We really like you, you're offering us something nobody else talked about before." So, I'm into listening, I'm into going that far, without creating too much expectation.
I would, I would suggest, I'm in the same camp as that. You know, I'm certainly fine with, with hearing people out, but making no promises about whether we'll make any decision that evening or, or any other evening. You know, we might, we might not, I just don't know, you know? But I, I think that's the clear thing we can say, is like, you can come down and talk to us, we may do nothing, we may do, we may say no immediately, we may say yes immediately, or we may wait two weeks and say yes two weeks later, or no two weeks later, or whatever. I think all of those things are within the realm, I think. But I agree with you, I think hearing them at least, they, like you said, they may offer some, they may tell us something we haven't heard before that really strikes us in a way that's very different than anybody else. So I think that's, you know, worth being open to the possibilities. Mr. Steinberg, do you have something?
I mean, I think that, though, it's fair to say, listening as we encapsulate this conversation, that if there's a request for a transfer of a current medical marijuana to a new provider, or a new request, that we will be asking a full set of questions, going into all of the criteria that have been discussed tonight, including, which is mostly the criteria from before, but I think that Ms. Kruger has certainly articulated an additional one, which is, is this the best and highest use of the location? And the second is that we are, at least at the moment, disinclined to have more than four that are selling both medical and adult use, though that's not a concrete policy. It's just, was, I think we're, the conversation was going before. But other than that, I, I agree that if somebody wants to come in, that we should be entitled to appear, and for them, I don't think that that's a major expense in comparison to all the other expenses they anticipate taking on.
We do want to be dazzled, though. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Is there anything else anyone wants to add on this?
I want to add, just add about the questions that we ask, and so, we each made up those questions based on what, because, you know, we have to do everything in an open meeting, that we thought were good questions to ask. There is no set, I mean, there might be free to us individually, but there is no set questions to be asked, and that's one of the things I was referencing when I said, "There's no checklist they can look at and say, 'Oh, well, I've, I meet seven of these 10 criteria, I know what, exactly what they're going to.'" They should look at our old tapes, then they'd know what we were going to ask them. But we don't have a document, we don't have a criteria document that says, "These are the things we're looking for." And partly, it's because things continue to unfold, and so we're not going to make one, it doesn't sound like, before any of that happens. But, but because we don't have that, we also, we ourselves are depending on our own knowledge gained over the last couple of years of doing this, of asking those questions, rather than it being something we hand out and say, "These are the questions."
All right. So I think it's been, for me, it's been productive to hear each of you, and certainly, if anyone's still watching, if they have comment or suggestion for us, certainly write us an email, because I certainly, you know, don't have monopoly on good ideas, so send those things in to us, but I think we're trying to, you know, wrap our heads around this, and I found this productive. So, moving on in our agenda, more sort of pro forma sort of stuff, next up is committee and board appointments, reappointments. We have an appointment there. Someone would like to offer a motion?
I'll make a motion, and then if Ms. Kruger wants to add to it, because she was probably involved with the interview and knows the criteria for this committee and the various people to serve, she can add to it. I move to appoint Sharon Povinelli to the Downtown Parking Working Group through June 30, 2018.
And there's a second?
So, segueing perfectly off what Mr. Steinberg said, we don't have a copy of the charge in here, we should always have a copy of the charge, except maybe when we're doing a whole bunch of appointments in June, maybe that's not a good time. But for something like this, where we did ask for specific sorts of skills and experiences in particular, I think it's valuable, and for us to be able to look at the balance of the committee, et cetera, we should always have the charge in here, and I realize that, you know, staff gets other priorities going to, but that should just be on a checklist somewhere, that the charge goes in with the CAF, so that we're all reminded, "Oh, right, that's who's on that already, and these are why." And also the date, because the date, I believe, is because, much to Mr. Baggs' disappointment, back when he was still with us, I said, "I wanted to have this be a time-limited committee." So is, is that the, is that the date everybody's at?
By 6:30, yeah.
Yeah, and that's why it's got that date, which is very soon, in comparison to many of our other appointments.
Well, let me, let me just add that Ms. Povinelli, many of you might know, is one of the owners of a downtown business, Hastings, not a secret, and would be replacing Matt Yee, who was a downtown business manager, so she's sort of manager-owner. We have somewhat stuck with the original slots, but as we've lost people, we've tried to fill in with appropriate members, rather than necessarily the letter of that, if you might recall, that Ms. Anderson was on there as a sort of parking facilities, you know, person, that's unlikely we're going to find that, so we've, we've been flexible. We want someone who sort of knows the issues, who can, who, and Ms. Povinelli's come to a number of meetings, participated, and has participated with the Parking Garage Subcommittee of the Downtown Parking Working Group. So she was enough up to speed that it was good, because we may be finishing our two years July, or may come back here- years July, or may come back here and say, "Hey, give us another six months," or something. I still see it as a shorter, not a standing, ongoing committee, but whether July 1 is the absolute right time to fold, we're going to have that conversation in the spring. So, we did interview her, Mr. Malloy and myself, and I actually, I don't know exactly how the ball dropped, but I thought we had done this appointment a couple of weeks ago, and we hadn't, and, because we had said, "Yep, go ahead." But whether I didn't put it in writing, or I just didn't thought, so I actually thought she'd been appointed, and hadn't gotten her letter when she asked me. So, in a way, we're, this is a little bit of a makeup, but I, I think she would be appropriate. I'm sorry you didn't have the charge, but we did look at that, and, yeah.
I never meant to imply that Ms. Povinelli wasn't incredibly well-qualified.
I know, I know that.
It's simply, as a matter of structure, that's what we should be doing. I'm perfectly pleased you've been able to fill the slots, after we belabored how to fill them the first time, so, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
She'll be very happy to get her appointment.
Now she will get a letter.
All right. So next up on our agenda is Section 7, which is Licensed Public Media Parking Investigations. We have consent calendar. Are there any edits to those, please?
Yes. There is one edit, and then I can make a motion. To match, to make the motion match the requests, the first one, which is the all alcohol beverages at a reception in the Life Sciences Lab 320, is what is in the application form. It's not S330. And with that, since I did pare it all out, I'm perfectly prepared to make a motion to approve the items listed on the consent calendar for the February, I'm pausing here, 12, 2018 Agenda as amended.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Oh, nice try.
Try to move it along here.
You have to lift your head up and look.
That's an intentional thing, you know?
I remember those days. That's right. You just don't look around, and then you don't have any discussion. It works out super well.
No, please go ahead. I'm sorry.
I remember you just grumbling under my breath. So, it's a little weird that UMass is having an alcohol reception in one of the dining commons. It's a little weird, given all the talk we have about alcohol use on campus. But, it appears, and I had meant to double-check this earlier, but it appears that that's the night before spring recess starts. So it's on the 10th, and the 11th is when spring recess starts. So, sure, I guess, I mean, we obviously have the chief of police look at this, but it's a little strange.
One thing, one would think they would be serving food, hot sandwiches, soups, one of that list of common victuals that we often request or ask for, but, any other?
A little dubious.
We'll have to check, I guess.
A little dubious, but all right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that unanimous. All right, so now we're in, we've done all those, we're voting whatnot, we're on to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first off, a couple of things I want to mention. One is, our Cup of Joe will be Friday at Share Coffee, and I'll be with Building Commissioner Rob Mora from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. at Share Coffee, that's this Friday. Secondly, I wanted to mention that, I want to thank LSSE for a great winter fest. They, they expanded this year from a one-day affair to a one-week affair. And if you look at the number of events that they had organized, or had sort of put under their umbrella over the course of a week, it was pretty impressive. And I think that everybody, other than Mr. Wald's dog, enjoyed, enjoyed the event.
What happened to your dog?
Fireworks. Didn't like fireworks.
Oh, oh, okay.
But it was, they, they really took a chance, they had a lot of energy from volunteers who wanted to make this happen. They received a lot of support from fraternities and sororities. So, congratulations to Barb Bills and her staff for being ambitious, trying to get, do a little bit more, and good for them. The, also, well, you guys will talk about that. Just as a follow-up, if you recall, a couple of meetings ago, you had approved the alcoholic beverages licensed hours change for Amherst Cinema, subject to the police chief's review, and he has approved it, so that has been issued. There is a, we, we talked at one point about, I think last time, about safety measures that can, the town can implement at voting places. And at the same, that same evening, the police chief was meeting with the school committee about suggested changes that, to both physically for some of the spaces, but in particular one, for the Cracker Farm School to have a police officer on duty. So today, we received a letter, which we will put in your packet, for information. I don't think you need to take action on it necessarily. It's something that we would accommodate, based on, if the police chief says it's a necessity for us to have an officer, and the, the school committee is requesting it, it's something we would look at our budget to make sure that just happens. Unless anybody says that's a really dumb idea. But I think that's, there's a resident who came and spoke to you as well, at that, at some point. The, I wanted to note that last, last meeting, we gave you a litigation status update, there was a mistake on it, I sent you a replacement, just so everybody's aware that there is a replacement that's been uploaded on that. Next meeting will be focused on, which is in two weeks, tonight was sort of the David Zomack, Sandra Aldridge showed, next time will be all about a lot of DPW things, and that will include the second meter for agricultural use regulations that we'll be presenting to you. It'll include a presentation on pavement management, which is very timely, because I think if you drive around the town, we, I don't think it's called management anymore, I think it's just survival. But, you know, we have a very detailed presentation on that, so I think it'll be really interesting. We have a number of other things that involve DPW, just updates as much as sort of where we're headed on a lot of these major projects for DPW. But the big one will be the second meter for agricultural use, that will, we'll have the information to you in advance. And the, there was another thing in here. Oh, yeah, so we're, we had got, as I told you, we had gone out to bid for ambulance billing to, as a contracted service, and we have received numerous bids on that. We are going to go into contracting out our ambulance billing. We have worked through the staffing issues internally, which includes some collective bargaining issues, and, and that will all work, that will begin on March 1st. And so, we're, and the fire department and treasurer's collectors office are both prepared and ready to launch into this initiative. We think that it will provide, take, take a very important task and give it to a company that specializes in it, because there's a lot of nuances to ambulance, to billing for medical services, that it's really hard for our staff to stay up to speed on it, because things change all the time, and these companies are out there, and they, almost every, very few cities and towns do their own ambulance billing anymore, it's all contracted out. So it's a good thing to do, and I think we're, we're in a pretty good space, staff-wise. It's, it's a combination the staff will have to make. It'll be, there's some negative impacts for some employees, but I think we've been communicating that with folks, and they're okay. And then I have to request, if the, we, right before coming down here, we received the final wording on the charter ques, summary of the charter question from Town Council, who, the Charter Commission met last week, had come up with language, Town Council had comments on it, they were going back and forth. But, and, I neglected to ask the chair to put this on the, the agenda for tonight, so I have to ask if you're willing to have a special meeting to vote to place the question, the charter question on the ballot. The reason it would have to be this week is that it has to be done 35 days prior to the election, which is February 20th. There is an opportunity to meet at 10:30 on Fri, on Thursday, because two members of the board will be here for JCPC until 10-ish, and then, or until 10 or 10:30. And then, two members from the board will be for the, here for the Marijuana Working Group at 11:00. So there's an opportunity, at least three of you, I know are going to be in the building in that timeframe. And I'm not sure if the chair was going to be able to make it or not, and Mr. Wald's schedule. So, that was, it would've been nice to have had the language finished and ready for you to review tonight, but really, it's a, according to Town Council, you have to take the action, but it's really a ministerial action of saying, "Yes, we want to put this on the ballot."
Ms. Burge?
So to click, to beat that to a little more detail. So we are only, as a select board, all we do is agree that, and we, in fact, already agreed to this a long time ago, we just didn't vote to put the question on the ballot, because we're required to do that after the Charter Commission says, "We finished our work." So we have to put the question on, that normally reads under MGL, "Shall this town?" And just to make things interesting, the Charter Commission wants it to say, "Shall Amherst," as opposed to "Shall this town." But the rest of the words are just what they say at MGL, and that's the question. And then, that's the thing that we say, "Yes." And then, by putting that on, the Charter Commission is entitled to put their explanation. And we've seen a draft of that, as the entire board, I had seen a previous draft. It has been changed again numerous times since then, because it went back through the Charter Commission itself, and then went back to Town Council again, as you've described. And so, we don't get to have any say, per se, on what they write for their part. It's kind of the equivalent of when the Galvin puts out the red book on, on the questions. We might have an opinion as to how long it ought to be, because, you know, it's already a long ballot, they're going to have to flip over the page, hopefully. I'd suggested we talk with Ms. Burgess about making sure it starts on the front page, so nobody gets confused and forgets that they have to turn it over. But beyond that, it really has nothing to do with us, except, based on our amazing wisdom over the years, I had suggested to the Charter Commission that we, if any of us individually have input, based on the drafts we've seen so far, even though knowing they've changed, if there was something that you saw that just was like, "Wow, are you sure you wanted to mention this, or you didn't want to mention that?" You could individually tell the chair of the Charter Commission that. But as a group, we don't need, we don't vote on that, because that's not our part. Our part's only the part out of MGL, and they get to do the other part. And we don't have to accept what they say. It's just, they just turn it into the town clerk, and it's got nothing to do with us.
It's done, it's, I mean, we're not doing it tonight, but...
It's not done.
Too fast having input, I thought. I mean, it's done.
Well, as I said, just before...
Wouldn't be a great time to do it.
Just as I said before, we came down, Town Council had made recommendations, and the, the chair of the Charter Commission has been granted some, some leeway from his commission to make some changes, and, but if anything major, he would reconvene the commission and go back to them.
Right. To reconvene before our deadline to vote, to put this on?
Unless it's like, you see a comma or something, no, we, no.
No, they don't have to reconvene before our meeting. Our meeting is only for our part.
Because their summary could change.
Their summary, they can keep changing up until the minute that Ms. Burgess says they have to turn it in.
Just the upper part of the questions.
Exactly. And, and so the question was, who's authorized to tell the town clerk to put a question on the ballot? And it's really just you, who has the authority to do that.
We could do it Thursday, and we'd be within the 48-hour thing.
We would post it tomorrow morning, if we could get a quorum for that.
You're in both places, right? And so, and so, yes, we could do that. But what I'm saying is, I know that you saw a draft, a previous draft, it's been changed since then. But if you really had a strong opinion about, don't wordsmith it, but if you had a really strong opinion about a concept that was or was not included, then that would be worth sharing with the chair of the Charter Commission, but it doesn't come to us, as a board.
Buck, were you saying 10:30?
I was thinking 10:30, yeah. 10:45, whatever you find easiest.
10:30, okay.
Turn those questions for the manager, for all the things you have.
Yes, so, will we have a quorum at that point?
I'll be there.
Do you need just a quorum?
We see a quorum.
It's just the charter, to say, "Yes, the question goes on about."
Well, I'll be here for JCPC. I was hoping not to hang around for very long afterwards, because I'm actually leaving town that night.
Do you want to make it 10? I could probably get there earlier.
It's a two-minute task.
He doesn't want to wait till 10:30, is what I'm saying. I could come earlier.
JCPC, it's hard to get it, I mean, we try to, like, last week, we ended at 10:00, the other week, it's hard to just drop everything and rush out, maybe even 10:15 would be...
Also, whatever's convenient.
Is on your agenda for JCPC?
Oh, I don't know, but it's like, sometimes people want to...
So we're going to be in the same place, right? We're going to be in the same meeting room?
Either this room or downstairs, I'm not sure.
And so, because I think Marijuana Internal Working Group's down there then, too. So if you want to make it 10:15, Mr. Steinberg, or even 10 o'clock, and then we just, we just come to order late.
When we get there, it starts late, let's say 10 o'clock.
It starts late, it's fine, but that way, 10 o'clock...
A quorum, it doesn't start.
Yeah.
That's right. And that way, but that way, if you...
Great, thank you.
We've got it figured out, 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
And then, I did want to talk to you about the, what, what the ballot will look like. So when Ms. Burgess does the ballot, she takes the ballot that has the most races on it. So, Precinct 9 may have 16 people running for town meeting, and then she sets that up and places the question wherever it winds up, underneath the, the races. And then, for other precincts, if they may only have four names, she doesn't move the question. The question stays where it is. So you might have four, four races, and then a lot of white space, but it's to make sure that's presented to all the voters in the same way. And if it's, it's at the bottom, and it, it might leak over to the back. The idea is to have the question on the front, so people know there's a question. Her fear is that people won't remember. She will instruct her election workers to make sure you turn it over, but people forget, they, you know, they get flustered or something. So, her goal is to try to make sure it gets on the front, at least the question itself, maybe not the summary, as much of it as can be on the front. But it's going to be defined by the most contested race up there, so that's how she does it. But we will see, I, I will see a draft of it before it goes. She's willing to show that to me. It goes to the printer, the printer looks at it, does up a mock-up, sends it back, and then we can look at it.
And it's helpful to know why, why it's like that.
Yeah, so people will say, "Why do you have all this space? So you're doing," you know, it's because it's to treat every, every precinct the same, versus someone saying, "Oh, you're trying to game the system by pushing it down."
So one precinct might have it way up at the top, and then one would...
It would be right, not right for others.
Or competitive races would have, it's okay. Place that the same in each one. Totally makes sense.
Anything else? So, next up is member reports. Does anyone have something? I do a little bit. Mr. Steinberg, would you like to start?
I'll just be really quick on three things, because I know it's getting late. One is on the appointment process, since we just threw that, I wanted to sort of acknowledge that we're continuing to work along at this point with our endless transition, but Ms. Kruger and I have been working very effectively together, really as a two-person team on it. And so, I really appreciate all that I've learned about the process from her. One of the things that has come up, and, is that we've sort of begun to realize that a well-intentioned system of interviews has begun to weigh down the process a lot. We've done a lot of good work with it, but we have been giving some thought, and we'll come back to you with a more concrete recommendation on how we might modify the system to have it work effectively for the greatest number of committees, and work effectively for all of the staff and volunteers, including members of this board who are involved. Secondly, as far as Sister Cities is concerned, I've had discussions with the chair of the Kana Gisaki Committee, they are just engaging in a process, actually starting this meeting tomorrow evening, about really thinking about what is some of the future goals for their committees, and an issue that I had raised in the letter that I had sent to Ms. Johnson on behalf of the board, that one has to be really thoughtful about what is the goals of the Sister City process. And received a email today, which I have not had a chance to respond to, ironically, from the La Paz Centro Committee Chair, essentially saying that she wanted to talk to somebody from the Select Board, and it's... from the Select Board and it sounded like it was the same kind of an issue. So this is actually a good time to sort of see where the existing Sister City Committees are so that I would suggest that if we have our Chair and Vice Chair receive a request to add a third Sister City, that we wait until probably April after the town election before we actually take that up, both to know what the form of government is going to be going forward and to make sure that we get adequate feedback from the two existing Sister City Committees about their status and challenges before we start taking on a third. And the last thing, just to report on is that, I think I reported previously that I've been working with Ms. Kruger and Mr. Baughman and, as is the Chair of the Fire Station GPW Study Committee, Lynn Grismer, with four people who are from Mothers Out Front and associated groups who are involved in drafting the original net zero energy bylaw about whether we, whether we can collaboratively create some modifications to the bylaw to make it more workable, but with the thought that it's something that of course, we've always felt was, needed to be done and that it's still a work in progress. And, but I really wanted to thank all of the people who are involved for coming forward and some, and actually a few additional community volunteers who've offered expertise in what is very good process. But there's really not anything to report additional tonight.
Thank you.
Other reports?
Sure. So just to add about the, looking at some ways to possibly streamline some of the committee interviews. We had, I had drafted and Mr. Steinberg had reviewed, a memo that would be essentially to Mr. Baughman, but also to the Select Board. So we've kind of done that, but it wasn't on tonight's agenda. And I asked Mr. Slutter to consider that and decide when it would be appropriate. So I think the whole Board probably has some interest in a short discussion about how we might change, what's really a practice, it's not a rule or a regulation. It might become something that we add to the Select Board Guidebook, because that section predates when we started doing these interviews. And just in terms of the work to revise or rewrite the zero net energy bylaw, at least within our little group felt it really needed to, that means the four, not the collaborative discussion, really felt that that bylaw needed to be rewritten and that meant, that would mean bringing it to town meeting, probably for the annual meeting. And I just wanted to add what Mr. Steinberg was talking about, because we might feel that way, but it's really going to be this Board that decides that we would be sponsoring yet a different version of a, of a zero net or called similarly bylaw. And we would have until, I think, the April 2nd signing of the warrant to work on that, be sponsored by the Select Board. So just wanted a little chance, without getting into the nuts and bolts of what we're doing, this is just starting out in this collaborative process, but just, I wanted to know that we're thinking that and would want to know if the full Board kind of agrees that we would go ahead and work on that. We're going in that direction of drafting a new bylaw and bringing it to the annual town meeting.
Personally, I'd say that's, that would be all right. I think that we should, if we can get it crafted in time and, you know, articulate the sort of pieces that need to be there. And I would say, yes, we should try to do that because I think that as it currently stands, it's unintentionally obstructive to certain things. And, and that isn't, that wasn't, I don't think, the folks' intention when they put it forward, but I think it is in that, in that way now. And so if we can find some things that we can fine-tune about it to make it more functional than that, I think it's beneficial regardless of what happens to the March election and all that sort of stuff, but.
Strategy-wise, it's hard to sit there in a, in these, in a discussion and say, we think we want to do this, but the "we" is really this body and so "we", that's a deliberation. And I wanted to make sure you guys were on board.
So along those lines, just to be clear about the deadlines. So yeah, we don't sign the warrant till the 2nd, but we're supposed to look at it on March 19th. And the internal warrant review, where hopefully, usually, legal counsel looks at it before they show up on a Friday morning and look at it for the first time with the whole group of people, because I don't consider that to be very efficient, is March 16th, in terms of language. So it, there is some, some pressure there in terms of fast track, but um-
Push it up as we go with different versions.
But we know that, associated with all other kinds of articles that are coming up, boiling up through things. But it seems so far away, but it's really not, as it turns out. It's only about a month.
Still, we're both, that's right. Any other sort of member report things? For you?
Come on, talk about marijuana. You didn't even want to. I can't think of anything.
Okay, that's fine. You're not going to-
I'm not going to talk about parking, but, but. Well, we had, it's, it's hard. We had, we were trying to sort of plow through a bunch of stuff on the day of that snowstorm and Town Hall was closing and we were meeting and it, it felt a little disjointed. And my idea for our next meeting, which I was looking for the date, we can't find because my calendars won't synchronize, to kind of pull back and look at the six months, six-month goal program, the work plan, and really get the group talking with each other about where they want to go. Because we, just, you know, being sort of so task-focused and trying to get this done and that done, and what about this feed and that. So I think we're just, and we will have our new member officially on and to just sort of have it be more of a working session to kind of see if we can gel around where we're going. Because we are getting near maybe closure on another set of recommendations. And there has been commentary from a number of people, and you'll probably see this in the paper, I got a letter from Mr. Vickery, Attorney Vickery, who's the now Chair of the President of the Chamber Board, saying he had a real issue with the six to eight enforcement hours. Others have had that issue. And then Mr. Merzbeck from the Gazette called me. So I think, because Mr. Vickery sent it to the paper as well. So there'll be something about that. And that's the issue that I think the Downtown Parking Working Group, but I have to get them all to agree to this, will probably take up first to evaluate or reevaluate. So we did a number of changes and the thinking is it takes four to six months of a change before people really learn it and are used to it. So that's the general idea about, we did a bunch of changes, let's give it some time to see how it works. But I think we're going to front-load a conversation about the six to eight enforcement hours, because that seems to be the biggest area of concern and contention. But we're not going to do it at our next meeting, because I want that to be some space to kind of figure out. And, and get them to say, how do you want to talk about that at maybe two meetings out? So that's just a little, you know, news from the front.
I noticed we're into puns tonight since you were talking about plowing through issues on the meeting in the Davis snowstorm.
Oh, no. I missed that one.
So I'm going to ask about parking, something that came to our attention. I know you're going to love this. But one of the things, I hope that when the Downtown Parking Working Group reports back to the Select Board on the status of those conversations, that it, we're reminded of why we did that eight o'clock to begin with, because I didn't like it and I wasn't the only one that didn't like it. And I really don't like it now that I have my parking ticket to wave around.
Seven PM is a peak. Seven PM is a peak. Seven PM is a peak.
Is why, right. But at this point, the people who are giving me feedback, I'll act like none of them wanted it. Like no one in town wanted. I'm like, hmm, because somebody wanted it, because that's why we agreed to do it. So it would be useful to remind us where that idea originated and to make sure that they've rethought their position, whoever that was. So that would be helpful. And the other issue is that I'm concerned about the fact that the Senior Center is still issuing parking stickers and in fact is advertising it on the front page of their newsletter, that they're advertising parking stickers that not only are for use at the Senior Center, which is something we've talked about for years, and there was an informal program started to make sure that both volunteers and participants in programs had relatively easy parking. It's now being advertised as parking for use at the cinema, for shopping, et cetera. This is like so not part of the system. And we talked about this several times when we were starting this conversation.
Is this part of member report?
And, and so what I'm saying is, how else am I going to get this on somebody's agenda?
It's on our agenda.
Because we need to hear back about that, because we're getting, because this is just working in isolation.
You're worried about it's being-
Excellent. I'm sure it's on your agenda list somewhere, just like we have a Google Doc and theory of what our agenda items are.
It's more than that. Don't worry about parking in that way.
I just am concerned about people being sold parking stickers.
I know your, I know your concern.
Yes. So thank you, I appreciate that. And I, you know, there's probably other things that need to be dealt with as well. So thank you, I appreciate that. And hearing the timing on that, because obviously we're going into town meeting and everything else going on associated with that. In terms of member reports, that was, I really just wanted to mention that as we knew last time, because Ms. Kruger had already testified that morning, I testified the next day, Ms. Vetterman went with me, she chose, she chose not to speak. The meeting that you were at, the hearing you were at was much bigger than the one in Greenfield, partly the size of the room kind of, I think, influenced that. We didn't have a bunch of legislators that ours like had been at the first one. We didn't end up in the newspaper. There was like zero coverage of that one. So it was lucky that we hit both hearings, because you never know which one's going to be the popular one. And so we'll be very curious to see what comes out of the CCC from that, because as we mentioned earlier in the conversation, they're getting a ton of feedback from the Baker Administration, various ass agencies saying, Speaker of the House, everybody's saying, wait, 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 wait. So it'll be very interesting to see what they actually take into account and what they change for their deadline. I think they're planning to have it done by March 9th, from March 15th. And that will be more or less what the regs are. So if you have any additional input on that, then Ms. Kruger and I could take that into account. We have another meeting on Thursday. So see with that. And we're also talking about tweaks to town meeting, associated at town, at annual town meeting too, that were establishments or retailers, for example, that kind of thing. Again, not getting too far ahead of ourselves, because we don't know what some of the regulations are actually going to look like. And Black History Month was Saturday morning and it was not horribly freezing cold, like it often has been, so that was really nice. And it was a little, and so we appreciate that the flag went up previously and then was raised again at that event. And for those out in the viewing public, we're always looking for more people to help organize that event. But it went off without a hitch, so thank you for making sure. Yeah, it actually, it was, it was nice. And one of, and one of the, as you all know, one of the members of our Human Rights Commission so happens to be in an acapella group, so we even got to have additional entertainment that we don't normally have. So that was very helpful.
Mr. Wall?
I feel I should talk a lot, because we're not even at ten-thirty yet and not as young, but-
Exactly. Keep going.
Ms. Burge talked about Black History Month, so she stole half my report. Another thing is that on Sunday, I attended the annual meeting of the Historical Society, which had a very interesting lecture about fashion and textile collections, but also was the presentation of the CONC Award for Service to Amherst History to Jonathan Tucker, our former Planning Director and Historical Commission liaison. So that was a nice event, honoring someone who's done a lot to support town committees and generally encourage the study of the town's past.
So, anything else from anyone? I just have a couple of quick things. First and foremost is the AgCom is going to meet tomorrow evening, where it will take up, and I will help sort of paint the picture of the second meter for agricultural use. So I'll try to report back their, their feedback in case they don't get an opportunity to send us a little note or memo on that before meeting on the 26th. They are still looking for members, so I'm going to make a plug for them.
Did I say something about AgCom? Well, I had run into the Chair, Rebecca Ferkay, and this issue of membership, and it's a nine-member Board, you know, maybe you could also talk to them about, they had an interest in a Warren article to reduce the size of their commission, because it really has to come from them. She said she just, you know, needed to think about it or talk about it. But because we have these deadlines and you know what the deadlines are, and we were talking about them earlier, I think if you could bring that information to them about what they would need to do by when and if they wanted to, because there just aren't that many active farmers, that's part of the problem. That's one of the reasons. And it's been very hard for them.
Right. And I, I have mentioned to them in other meetings previously about, that I would check to make sure that state law didn't prohibit the fewer than nine, and it does not. I looked it up.
Yeah, okay, good. So that's their choice.
So Ag commissions don't have to be nine. We happen to pick nine, so it can be less than nine.
Following up on that, since you did check MGL, thank you, is that the other alternative we could do, which we haven't done often, but has been done for Human Rights Commission, is we could lower the quorum number.
Without going back to town meeting.
Well-
They were created by town meeting.
If they were created by town meeting, then the assumption is majority other than, but that would be another alternative. If they thought they would suddenly have enough farmers to do it, but they really only need X amount of people, that's another alternative. But it would still have to go to town meeting.
Right.
Not a field that's trending, although with marijuana cultivation, that could change. And that is actually a new pool of people, but we're just not there yet.
Quite there yet.
Right. And that may be one of the topics. I haven't looked at the agenda yet for tomorrow night, so they may have that on their agenda, they may not. But I'm sure it will be one that they do take up before too terribly long. The other thing I'll report on is the Affordable Housing Trust met. We're still in process, I'm working on a policy that, again, as I mentioned before, we're, we're going to, the trust is going to adopt and seek adoption from planning board, select board, et cetera. But again, it's probably well into March before we'll have that in a form that will come to us that then we can offer our feedback on and, and that sort of thing. The other thing, just to East Street School, as Mr. Zomack hinted at, you know, the, the trust has been interested in that piece of property. We're actually, we, we voted authorize a little small bit of spending to do a little due diligence work on the property. It's potentially very wet, it's obviously frozen right now, so we can't do the work until it gets warm out. But it's, unless something really extraordinary happens, it's likely that we will have come to us an article from them for, you know-
Custody?
Custody of the property with, probably with both parts.
With the disposition.
With the disposition, but time limited.
Authority to dispose.
Right. Authority to, to look at it for, you know, for specific purposes, but also a time horizon. And again, it may be one of those things where, I indicated, it's like, let's not do this as a petition article, let's do this through the committee process and we'll work with you on that and, but the deadlines are coming up. But I also said, you know, if we get to a place, we do the small due diligence work and we realize it's not going to work, we can just dismiss it when we get to town meeting. And there's no deal there. So I thought it would be better for it to come through the formal process and so that, that will come to us sooner than later, because it will be something that, well, like you were saying, March 19th is going to be our, our review of that. We may, so it'll be before that, we'll, we'll probably start to see hints of it. We had rough language at the meeting the other night, it's still got a few more things to do.
Got about a month left to get ready for that.
So, and those are the things I wanted to mention to you folks. And so I believe, unless someone has anything else, we've exhausted ourselves and the meeting agenda. So I would take a motion to adjourn.
I wish to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.